Hi, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. My name is Lauren Christensen. I am the president of the school board. I'm going to ask the remaining members of the Board of Education to introduce themselves, starting with Ms. Ahmed.
Ahmed Ahmed, welcome, everyone.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Picard. It's nice to see everyone.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chigsood. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for coming out tonight.
I'm J.D. Westra. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm Jennifer Voss. It's nice to see you.
And our student co-chair.
Welcome, everyone. Josh Patterson, and I guess I can now say I'm a Plymouth senior.
Woo-hoo!
And student voice and action co-chair. Good to see you here tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Yes, good evening and welcome. Dr. Monica Merritt, superintendent. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to capture our minutes. We also want to thank that voice of PCCS, Mr. John Krieger, for being here this evening, taking care of our technology need. Like the remaining members of staff to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Curtis Kowits, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Good evening.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening, Abdul Mat Yoon, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student Family Engagement.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Onto adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. This is action item number 25-06-83. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. It's action item 250683.
Okay, can I please have a second? Second. Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Secretary Westra. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have leaves of absence for your consideration. We also have teachers that have successfully completed the requirements to receive tenure. There are quite a few, so we'll talk about that process a little bit later. We have recalls, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting. That's on June the 10th, our special meeting on June the 12th, and another special meeting on June the 16th. We have final reading of the following policies. Policy 7310, that's the distribution of surplus property, and policy 7450, property inventory. Finally, this evening, we have three tentative agreements for your consideration. This is a tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Cafeteria Association, the tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Pair Professional Association, and the tentative agreement with our Plymouth Canton Extended Day Association. All three of these agreements have been ratified by their individual unions, and we're bringing them forward for your consideration this evening. And again, our gratitude for our unions for working together with our team to reach a successful agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Seven zero. Okay, Mr. Redun, please take us through human resources.
Yes, hi. First, I would like to talk about, um, we had a few people from the recall that we recalled this evening. Last meeting, we had a few people that we had to lay off. We're already calling people back. So I want to welcome back Brianna Kalinsky and Corinne Stamatakos, back to the district. They've already been recalled to their positions. So we're happy about that. And then today, as Dr. Merritt was talking about, we had several teachers in several, this is probably not the right word to use. It was total of 68 teachers that achieved tenure status in the district. So just for people to know, tenure status, there's been some changes in the law, but you have to work in a district for four years. In the last three years, you have to be effective, well, effective, I was going to say effective and above, but have to be at least effective the last three years to achieve that honor. And so we have 68 teachers that achieved tenure this year, so we can give them a round of applause for their contribution. And that's all we have for today.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to celebrating success, and this is with member Picard.
Okay. This evening, the Board of Education is honored to recognize the extraordinary dedication and impact of one of our most committed team members by presenting an extra miler award to Alicia Fenstermacher. I hope I said that right. A true champion for learning, innovation, and student successorum across the PCCS community. Alicia, and you can stand up if you'd like to, so we know who you are. Alicia wears many hats, and she wears them all with purpose, energy, and heart. Whether she's ensuring classrooms and equipment are ready for driving across the district and even the country to support programs, Alicia is always there, early, ready, and dependable. Alicia serves as the coach of the Pioneer Middle School Robotics Team. She is a trusted mentor for the Lightning Robotics Outreach and Business Subgroups, helping students develop their skills, confidence, and professionalism. She leads our first LEGO League events for elementary students each December and May, creating exciting, hands-on STEM experiences for young learners. She's not only a program leader, she is a passionate advocate, uplifting student voices at every level. In addition to her work with robotics, Alicia also plays a vital role in expanding learning opportunities beyond the traditional school day through her leadership of the PCCS Community Education Program. In this role, she works to provide enriching experiences for learners of all ages and interests, whether it's chess, dance, arts, athletics, or personal development. Her efforts ensure that education remains accessible, engaging, and lifelong for everyone in our district. At this time, I'd like to invite a PCCS staff member and key leader of the award-winning Lightning Robotics Team to share a few reflections about Alicia and her incredible impact. Jay Hobson.
Okay, first of all, this is a terrific person. She's been there for me for a long time, but I had some medical problems where she really showed up and helped me out, so she's been there for that. She also, along with Laura Reeves here, had taken a 24-hour bus trip down to Houston, spent five days straight with high school students, and then taken that 24-hour bus ride back. If you haven't been on a bus with 55 kids on the way back after they've been in Houston all day long, who haven't showered, who are always hungry, it's amazing what she can put up with. So it's just fantastic. She has been there for me, oh, so many times when I couldn't make it or I was just too tired sometimes, she opens the doors. And this is in between her running back to dance recitals, making sure the coaches got gyms open, making sure everything is set for all of her community edge stuff. She is just fantastic. But she's just one of the many that support robotics. I get lots of support and could not do it without them. But she's a little bit cut above everybody else because she's always there. She is so organized, which is probably my worst quality. I am not organized at all, so she's great and fantastic, and I can't thank her enough, and I can't thank you enough for awarding her this award. She truly deserves it. Thank you.
And thank you for your kind words. I'd like to invite Frank Rigarello, Rigarello, the Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, to say a few words.
You got it. Close enough. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Merritt, Madam President, members of the board. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'll be brief. When we bring a new staff member onboard to the board, Dr. Merritt always says, "We always hire champions here." Well, 10 years ago, we hired a champion named Alicia Fenstermacher. She lives up to that title every day. It's true. I've worked with Alicia for the past seven years and found her to be hardworking, intelligent, and innovative, and organized, Jay. Absolutely organized. There's no way we could operate a full-service community education department with just two people without Alicia. She works like five. In the past, there have been as many as four people that have worked in this department, but Alicia's work is incredible, and she does way more than one person. She has a whatever-it-takes attitude, and on many days, she works past the workday just to make sure that our classes, our camps, our workshops are up and running smoothly, that the teacher has everything they need, and that we're moving on. It's why the department has such a great name. Many of you recall that we did a full presentation to the board earlier this school year, and you heard all about this department and its great work, and Alicia's great work. The last thing I'll say about this is when you have a person like Alicia on your team, the best thing you do is get the heck out of the way and let her do her job. And that's what we do, and she makes us look great every single day. So she's amazing and truly deserving of this award tonight. I'm aware of her volunteer work with the robotics team, and that she plays a huge role with that team, and we try to support that every day. But I wanted to be here tonight to congratulate you myself, Alicia, and thank you for everything you do for us.
Well, to Alicia, thank you for being the kind teammate, mentor, and community builder that every district hopes to have. Your work may have often been behind the scenes, but your impact is front and center in the lives of the students and families you support, the programs you make possible, and the excellence you help PCCS achieve. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire PCCS community, we offer our congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. You are a true extra miler. And this concludes our celebration success segment, so.
Alicia, do you want to say a few words?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to. I'm organized and prepared, so yeah, I have something.
Thank you for this recognition. I've been involved with the first robotics program for about 15 years now. Started with my son, who is now a college grad, and my daughter is a rising senior. So over time, I've progressed from being an elementary involved parent to a middle school coach, and then now a high school Lightning Robotics mentor. And I've honestly loved every minute of it, you know, from the tight timelines to helping students overcome challenges, to those long bus rides or long nights or long competition weekends. You know, I would do it all over again for my robotics family, so. The reason I do it is because I see such an impact on grades K through 12. So much growth year over year, and just so many acquired skills from it. And not just how to design and build a robot, but it's, you know, winning as a team, losing as a team. It's so much more. The lessons they learn beyond STEM, the life lessons that they're going to take with them. So I would encourage anyone who wants to get back to the community, their school community, get involved as a mentor, right? You don't have to be a parent in order to do so. People are needed at all levels, the youngest of kids, especially the high school team. You know, whether you are an engineer or a programmer by trade, or if you have experience in marketing or graphic design, or you're great at presentation skills, you know, the kids can really benefit from your talent and your time. So I highly would recommend that because it's such a life-changing experience for the person who does it, and it brings a lot of joy. So, thank you so much.
I say it every time, but celebrating success is our favorite segment of every board meeting. Onto Board Committee Reports and Action. First up will be the President's Report. I do have a few things that I want to share with everyone, just some updates. We had a special meeting last week on June 16th for the purposes of Dr. Merritt's annual evaluation. We had a great discussion as a team and built some consensus around our final rating of Dr. Merritt's performance using our approved superintendent evaluation tool. I am pleased to share that she received an overall rating as effective for the '24-'25 school year, and we look forward to the great progress continuing next year. Additionally, we have our organizational meeting coming up on July 15th, where we will select officer positions, adopt our next calendar for the '24-'25, or, excuse me, the '25-'26 school year, as well as our committee meeting calendars and tend to other pertinent board business, annual business. During tonight's discussion, though, you'll notice on our agenda, I will open it up to any board members to share any interest in being considered for an officer position. We will also be planning, so another kind of board business item, we will be planning a summer board retreat likely on a Saturday, wanting to dedicate a little bit more time than just a couple of hours to this effort. We are working, basically, to focus some time on our professional development and overall strengthening of our board governance as a team. We are currently working on securing a facilitator and coordinating some dates, so just look out for some communication on potential dates, and hopefully, we can pick one that we all can attend. I believe that's everything, so thank you very much. That completes my President's Report. Okay, moving on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee with member Westra.
Good evening, Madam President. We have not met since our last meeting, and our next meeting will be in the fall of 2025.
Okay, thank you. Okay, onto Policy Committee with number Sado.
Thank you, President Christensen. We actually just met a couple of hours ago in the room down there where we always meet. And we had two old business policy items that we discussed. 6320, purchasing. We're still waiting for FNO. Take your time. We're in no hurry. We have lots of other policies to get through. The next one, we're waiting for Niola, which is our policy entity that gives us language for policies. So that policy we're waiting on is 6325, procurement for federal grants and funds. Again, that's on hold until we get more language from Niola. The new business policies that we discussed today are Policy 6550, travel payment and reimbursement. That one is ready for the board for a first read at the next meeting. The other new business policy that we discussed was Policy 9700, relations with special interest groups and sponsorships. This is a new policy, a lot of new language, and we kind of dug into the implications of each of those bullet items that were in there. And we were joined with legal counsel, so legal counsel said that they were going to refine that policy with more legal language before we bring it for a first read. So we're going to take it back to the Policy Committee in August for a revisit with legal counsel on that one. And actually, that one is tied to what we found out in our discussion. That one is tied to Policy 7230, which is our gifts policy. So both of those go hand in hand. We did ask our legal counsel to bring both of those back so they're consistent in language. The other policy that we discussed briefly was 2414, and that is reproductive health and family planning. We ran out of time, and again, we asked legal counsel to bring back language for clarity on that one. We will revisit that in August. We had a couple of other policies that were brought up. We didn't have time to dig into those. Again, we'll do that in August. So we have a tentative date of August 26th, but that is all dependent on what's approved in July. So hold that date on your calendars as a tentative, but again, it will be determined in July what are the final dates for all of the committees. That is it for me.
Thank you very much. Onto Finance and Operations Committee with member Keough.
Thank you. We had a really exciting meeting last Thursday. You know, you can see the decorations that we had up here. It was almost a luau theme in our FNO meeting, where we had an in-depth conversation around the PCEP pilot classroom furniture purchases that'll be on the agenda this evening. We also reviewed the key performance indicators for transportation and custodial, and have been very pleased with the progress that both of those groups have been doing in serving our district. We had a very in-depth discussion on the Crossing Guard Services Agreement that may be coming forward to a future meeting, and we reviewed the financial reports for the month of May. We are meeting again as early as this week, this Thursday, June 26th, and it's going to be a slightly earlier meeting for those of you that can't make the late meetings. You can come here at 3:30 in this room, where we'll be talking a very exciting agenda, and we welcome everybody to join us.
Thank you for that riveting report. Okay, on to Student Voice and Action Committee with Josh.
Our next SVA meeting will be around the beginning of next school year, though the exact date is still being determined. I hope everyone is having a great summer so far, and we look forward to our next meeting. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, I am going to dedicate my full Superintendent's Report to share our newest video in partnership with Highway Media. Mark Salom, if you recall, we were able to relaunch, I'll call it, our PCCS video, just taking an opportunity to remind our community all of the opportunities we have for our students and why PCCS, the newest version of it. But when we think about that next iteration, who better can tell our story but our kids? So this video now captures the voice of our students' experience. And so I just want to spend this time, first of all, just thanking our communications department, Mr. Frank Rigarello, Ms. Carly Raze, Mr. John Krieger, Linda Shimbo as well. And we have a new addition. I know she wasn't here at the time of the video, but just an amazing team and really capturing the essence of who we are with PCCS. And we couldn't have done it without that partnership with Highway Media. So if we can take our attention to our next iteration of our video.
I chose to come to PSEP because all the opportunities they offer me.
I actually live in Belleville, but I came over to PSEP because of the great academics.
There were just so many classes that I knew that were available here that aren't available anywhere else.
We serve 16,000 students, and that can be intimidating. So we work really hard and intentionally to make large feel small.
As a pre-med major, I was able to join the STEM Biomed Academy, and this has given me the chance to explore a bunch of lab skills.
The teachers here at PSEP have really helped me prepare for college in the way that really suits me.
My teachers have been so accepting and understanding whenever I talk to them about a problem, and it's really a nice environment to grow as a person. Whether you like art, you like science, or you don't really have an interest yet, there's always people here that can share that same bond with you.
If you don't find a club that's for you, you can always make a new one.
No matter what it is that you may be interested in, there's something at PSEP perfect for everybody.
My favorite thing about PSEP is all the people here.
The people.
I love meeting all the new people here.
You never know your first day of school. When you sit to someone you might not know, they might become your next best friend.
My name is David Bell.
The new street.
And I learn, prepare, and thrive at PSEP.
I'll just tell you a little bit of a backstory. There's hours and hours of footage of kids, so they came and just spent the time. There's no preparation. Nobody's giving kids a script. They're just in front of the camera, and they're telling their experiences. So really, the idea, we know we couldn't make the video, but so long, but the idea is that we can continue to just rotate new students in because we have the footage, but it's just a rock and roll, like it's a wind just all the way around. So I continue to be so proud of our young people because they really are excelling and just thankful for our teachers, our staff, our administrators that provide this environment for our students to be able to thrive. So more to come. That's it for me.
Oh, great. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, so we're moving on to our first section of Citizens' Comments. So we limit this section to 30 minutes. I just want to remind everyone that once we go past that 30-minute mark, we have a follow-up section after all of our administrative reports and recommendations. Each citizen has three minutes to speak. Please note that the board will not respond after each response. This is your time to share, but we do collect your information, and the board and the administration do follow up on each comment. As a reminder, please do not share any names when sharing concerns or criticisms unless you have their permission to do so. I am going to call them in the order that they were received. I have a pile here. So first up, we have Renee Wickliff.
Is this a good spot? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Nice shirt. Hello. My name is Renee Wickliff. My husband and I have three girls. Our eldest just completed Young Fives at Farron. Before I speak about Say Yes to Recession and why I support its mission, I want to thank the Technology Department for putting these on YouTube. I have learned a lot from listening to them. I wanted to give my support to Say Yes for Recession Initiative, which supports 60 minutes of unstructured, screen-free recess for all elementary students. 60 minutes of physical activity is recommended by the Centers for Disease Control to promote health and well-being of our children. Currently, my daughter gets two 20-minute recesses and physical education once a week. The recess is every day, but the phys ed is once a week. The American Academy of Pediatrics calls play, which occurs during recess, essential to the development of children because it contributes to the cognitive, physical, social, and emotional being of our youth. I wanted to talk about the findings from the Let's Inspire Innovation in Kids, or LINK research from Texas Christian University. LINK implemented four 15-minute recess breaks and a 15-minute character development lesson in elementary classrooms. Some of the results from this intervention included a 40% reduction in off-task behavior, allowing teachers more time to teach and less time spent managing classroom behavior. There was a 10% improvement in math standardized test scores and a 7% improvement in reading. But I wanted to talk about the emotional well-being of our children. I remember listening to a previous meeting where this board discussed the results from the Panera survey, and we're wondering how to make students feel a stronger sense of belonging. I know you were discussing high school students, but what if we started with our elementary students? What if we started fostering the feeling of belonging and friendship young? Recession is where children play and build friendships. And the LINK study found a 70% reduction in stress and anxiety and a 17% increase in positive emotions with increasing recess time. Don't look at adding more time for recess as something optional or one more thing on the school's long-to-do list. Look at it as critical for the development of our children, as important as learning to read and count. I also wanted to comment on the May 27th meeting, specifically the Citizens' Comments. I found it odd that several of the speakers didn't mention having children in the district or that they live in the district, so I looked a few of them up. One is a pastor from Phoenix, Arizona. A few had profiles on the Turning Point USA website. My understanding was that this 30 minutes of Citizens' Comments was added to the beginning to better serve the community so people don't have to sit through a 30-hour, I mean, three-hour meeting. So why are we letting people who don't have kids in our schools, don't pay taxes to our schools, aren't involved in our community, won't be voting for you in upcoming elections? Because as Damian from Mean Girls said it best, "She doesn't even go here. They don't live in the community," but they took the prime speaking spots from stakeholders in the community who had specific concerns. And they didn't even have the honesty or integrity to be transparent about the fact they didn't live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Chanel Talbert.
Hi, everybody. Long time no see. Okay. I'm here again after speaking in October 2024 to express concerns over the 10-minute reduction in recess. Back then, I spoke as a concerned parent. Today, I return with an even deeper understanding of the consequences. One of my daughters now requires five 10-minute walk breaks three to five times a day just to function. That's 15 to 25 minutes outside of the classroom, not because she wants to, but because she has to. And before this year, all she needed was a simple check-in and sometimes a check-out at the end of the day, just to see how she's doing. The shift has been dramatic, and I believe preventable. Teachers are deeply concerned, too. While the administration has said teachers can take students outside, many staff fear being reprimanded for doing so. They don't feel supported or safe doing what's best for their students. Several teachers told me they laughed when they saw the new curriculum schedule, not because of it was funny, but because it was out of touch. It didn't account for basic transitions like putting winter gear on, walking to and from lunch, or simply the next activity. "The academic expectations are unrealistic, and even with the added 10 minutes, it's nearly impossible to fit everything in," quoted from teachers. Yes, students are behind in reading and math. At the district, also the district removed, also the district removed reading interventions that staff are now begging to bring back. "It feels like the focus is in the wrong place, ignoring parents' concerns and educators' expertise." Even state representatives disagree with this approach. They see how we're stressing students and teachers with developmentally inappropriate demands. If this continues, we won't just lose families, we'll lose teachers. The people holding our schools together are burning out, and they're telling us why. We were once a destination district. Now families are looking elsewhere. Out of the 500 school of choice spots, only around 150 are filled, and more losses are projected next year. And there's the rollout of Young Fives, poorly communicated and misaligned, which is now causing parents to warn others against the program. We're asking five-year-olds to meet standards they're not ready for, and families feel it. Here's the hardest part. Half the board voiced concerns last October. Retired teachers and parents stood up and said, "This isn't right." But instead of pausing, we've received excuses that don't outweigh the outgrowing research showing our kids are overworked and losing their childhood. If we don't follow current data, data that reflects the need of the generation, we won't see progress. There's only so much time in a day, and only so... There's only so much time in a day and only so much that should be taught in a year. Let's focus on what matters. Supporting kids, resource teachers, and creating a culture where educators can speak up without fear.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Polly, I'm gonna do my best here. Beck Roush.
Bashrouche, pretty good.
Bashrouche, okay. Thank you for correcting me.
Good evening. My name's Polly Bashrouche, and I'm the Secretary of the Plymouth Canton PFLAG. In 2024, I retired after 47 years in education, working with kindergarten through doctoral students in public schools as a counselor and at the college level. In March, some of our board members presented three sessions to the PCCS staff. While it's possibly preaching to the choir, I was very impressed with how engaged, understanding, and supportive that they were of the LGBTQ population. So, but some of, in past board meetings, I think some letters were read from students and staff about how they're feeling about being in our school district. So I just want to, very disheartening, but I want to share a little data with you. More than 1,000 students in our school district here likely identify as LGBTQ+. Across Michigan, 16.4% of high school students identified as lesbian, gay, or bisexual in a 2023 youth's risk survey. And nationwide, 3.3% of high school students identified as transgender in the same survey. This is equivalent to 1,016 lesbian, gay, and bisexual, and 204 transgender students out of a population of 6,200 in this district, not counting middle schools and Stark Weather Academy. Over 300,000 teenagers in the U.S. identify as transgender. In my counselor world, that's over 300,000 students that are at-risk. I can give you a lot of statistics, but we need to be looking at the faces of all of our students. What if these struggling LGBTQ+ students were your children? How would you feel? So if you want more information about the presentation that we made to the district, we could certainly share it with you. And you can also email us at PlymouthCantonPFLAG@gmail.com, and we can send that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Ian Gonzalez.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ian. I'm a Canton resident and member of Western Wayne Indivisible and part of End Gun Violence in Michigan Coalition. I've spoken to you previously about Michigan's Safe Homes, Safe Schools law. I'm here today to offer continued support and a few additional ideas to help the district implement it effectively. As a reminder, the state law requires all school districts to share information annually with parents and caregivers about Michigan's Safe Firearms Storage Law. That law passed in 2023. It requires gun owners to store firearms securely using a lock or a safe anytime a minor is likely to be present. These efforts are critical, especially when we remember that firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in Michigan. I want to thank you again for already taking steps to share secure storage information with families. That early action truly matters. As we move forward, I want to suggest a few options that could make our outreach even more impactful. For example, offering free gun locks in discreet trusted locations like school-based resource centers, or even making them available in the front office with a simple flyer, letting parents know where to get one. These are small, non-invasive steps that could save lives. I also recognize that the conversation around guns can sometimes be seen as politically sensitive. That's why it's so important to emphasize that this effort is nonpartisan, rooted in public health and child safety. The University of Michigan's Institute for Firearms Injury Prevention is even developing materials specifically for schools that want to approach this issue responsibly and constructively. I've also, I brought a copy of the Safe Homes, Safe School one-pager with my contact information added. While the content hasn't changed since I last spoke with you, I want to reshare it as a resource and to invite any board members who are interested in working together on the next steps, like increasing access to gun locks or planning future communications to families, to please reach out to me. In addition, I'm sharing a flyer announcing End Gun Violence in Michigan's upcoming annual convention in governor candidate form, taking place September 27th at the Cathedral Church at St. Paul in Detroit. Leading gubernatorial candidates will be invited to speak about how they would be supporting gun violence prevention if elected. The day will also feature skill-based workshops and educational panels designed to strengthen community partnerships, an opportunity that may be of interest to school leaders and advocates willing to keep students safe. Thank you again for your leadership on this issue and everything you do to keep our schools and communities safe. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Katie Bennett.
Hi, guys. I'm back. Good evening. I'm Katie Bennett, and I'm here again with a clear message that our elementary kids need 60 minutes of screen-free, unstructured recess every day. The research is undeniable. Kids thrive when they move, play, and build social skills. Yet our schools are falling short of the 60-minute best practice that is already in place in many districts across Michigan and in the country. Last October, parents expressed their concern over a reduction in recess time in this district, and a lot of the members here supported or expressed support for more recess. In addition, the board expressed support for teachers to do what is best for the kids in their classrooms. The reality, though, is that that's not how things really played out this school year. Teachers were continuously told that they could in fact not take more than 20 minutes of afternoon recess and that they could not take a morning recess at all. That's not support. It's a step backward from where the district has been in previous years. And it's having real consequences. As Jonathan Haidt outlines in the book, The Anxious Generation, the lack of unstructured play is fueling mental health and behavioral issues throughout the country for this next generation of kids. Last week, I spoke to a Plymouth Canton middle school administrator about the fights happening in our middle school. Unsolicited, he said to me, I believe the rise in student fights is due to kids not learning how to resolve conflict because they're not getting the chance to practice it. Recess is the opportunity for kids to have conflict, to practice conflict, and to resolve conflict. All of us here had that when we were growing up. Now more than ever, parents are also paying attention to recess time. One of the parents that spoke here in October about the lack of recess for kindergartners has in fact chosen another school because of it. And they're not alone. We've collected 600 signatures from parents statewide and teachers statewide calling for 60 minutes of recess in Michigan. In this district alone, there's 170 people that have signed that petition, and there are over 230 members in our Facebook group that are also in support of this. This is a movement. This is something that's not going away. This is something that parents want. This isn't just about physical activity. It's about mental health, behavior, and academic success. More recess means better learning, better behavior, happier kids. We don't need more talk, we need action. A clear and forcible policy for 60 minutes of recess for all of our elementary students, real support for teachers, and a commitment to putting our kids first. Let's be the district that leads on this in our state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Julie Cassar.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of Linda Verduzco. My name is Linda Verduzco, and I've been an educator in this district for 31 years. I earned a degree in advertising from MSU, and I went back to school to be a teacher. And then I went back again to get my master's in education. In short, that was eight years of college. I've spent years proudly saying I worked for Plymouth Canton Schools, and I've worked for several amazing principals over the years. However, the current principal at Bentley Elementary hired just two short years ago created a fearful, anxious, and toxic work environment that became the reason I decided to retire early. The same principal evaluated my teaching as highly effective, which is public record. I say this because he seems to have no definable reason for targeting and harassing teachers and staff. So the 15 staff members who left in the last two years are not just disgruntled complainers. They are effective and highly effective teachers. I'm here today to ask the board to please look at the facts that were presented at the last two meetings regarding the massive exit of staff members from Bentley Elementary since he arrived. And regarding his harassment of others in different districts is also considered a pattern. I sent a professional letter notifying HR this terrible situation a few weeks ago. However, I've never received acknowledgement or return communication regarding my complaints. I also filled out an exit interview from the district that said, if you would like to speak with HR regarding this information, please leave your name and number. I did, and I was never contacted. To cover up this massive staff exit, the principal's telling others that the experienced teachers at Bentley, who most recently left, just would not follow the curriculum. Then why did he evaluate me as highly effective? Well, this rumor is simply not true. We organized all the materials, attended all training, implemented all current Plymouth Canton programs. We do supplemental remediation and enrichment where as needed, and this is best practice. How many teachers, dedicated to their district, dedicated to their families, and dedicated to each Indivisible student, have to be abused and degraded by this principal before we take action? As teachers, we honestly tell our students, everyone makes mistakes, and it does happen. But our district simply needs to show that they care enough to rectify this error, and they need to support and stand up the same employees that they themselves hired. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Rick Schlau.
Hello. I'm Rick Schlau, a former teacher at Bentley Elementary, who taught there for 24 years. I retired last year. Unlike some of my colleagues, though, that had spoken in the last couple of board meetings, fortunately, I was able to leave with my 30 years, so my full pension, where other teachers have not. What I felt I couldn't do, though, was go back to that building for another year, after seeing how my friends, my colleagues, my former student, and myself are being treated by the principal. I was 49 years old. I still enjoyed teaching. Never in my career have I felt anxiety to come to work until last year, the '23-'24 school year. I didn't go to the doctors, but I was actually coming to school with chest pains or shortness of breath just because of anxiety. I've never been one that got worked up like that. I know people who have wanted to be transferred and have been contacted, but meetings have been pushed back, and some even after the school year has been done. I truly hope this is not being pushed under the rug, hoping it will go away. I hope the people transferring have the opportunity to actually move to a new environment or changes be made to the existing building. They need to know before August, too, so they're not worrying about their future over the whole summer. Being a teacher, we build some very strong relationships with our students. And even after they leave our classrooms, we pray they're successful, but more importantly, safe. I had the unique opportunity to see a former student of mine grow up, become a phenomenal teacher, and eventually became a colleague. That's why I'm here, to look out for my former student and colleagues and to support them in any way I can. I'm speaking up and hoping to change the working environment to a more positive, supportive place. And if I do that, then I've done my job. Lastly, this could have been avoided a couple of years ago when a former teacher and administrator of Plymouth Canton Schools was overlooked for three principal jobs. Three openings, and she was bypassed for all of them. And you guys know who she is. She was very highly qualified. And this, of course, led her to leave our district. And now another district is reaping the benefits of this outstanding leader. I truly hope that our district was not clouded by hiring people based on other things rather than merit, qualifications, and character. But if the district did, let it be a lesson. If the district would have looked into what had happened in Ann Arbor, maybe this all could have been avoided. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Sheri Bowler.
Hello, school board. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Sheri Bowler, and I am currently a teacher at Bentley Elementary School. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the current teachers, recently retired teachers, and myself. I serve two roles at Bentley. First, and most importantly, I am a dedicated and well-respected kindergarten teacher who has a great reputation in the community and high NWEA test scores. During my career, I was named radio station teacher of the month and have been rated highly effective by multiple principals at Bentley, including our current one. My second role at Bentley is serving as the building union representative, which I enjoy and take very seriously, and won the Sharon Babel-Bredich Outstanding Leadership Award last May. Participating in the PCEA has really been a highlight of my career, and I've enjoyed this role now for four years. I love being involved in the district and helping to make decisions and change in education. The other part of the building union representative is supporting the teachers and having open communication with the principal regarding issues. During my 15 months serving the current principal, I had the opportunity to witness alarming behavior by our leadership when he would meet and communicate with teachers. His emails always stated, I would like to set up a time to meet and feel free to bring reunion representation. During the meetings, I witnessed belittling, degrading, and bullying aggressive type of behavior. After I sat through many of these meetings, I noticed that it was beginning to cross the line of harassment and emotional abuse. Each meeting with teachers took place in the office conference room, which I quietly named the interrogation room because that's what it became. Here are just a few quick quotes that stuck with me that I would like to share with you. He said this to other teachers, not me, but I was the one sitting in there. "I don't think this job is for you. You are a better sub than you are a teacher. I watched video footage and saw you dragging a suit across the hallway, which never happened, and no video was shared. Our principal created so much stress for one of the teachers that she had a full-blown panic attack and fell to the floor crying while I had to console my hard-working colleague. The principal then stood up and said, I'll give you two a few minutes. And he walked out, leaving me with someone in a panicked state. He never returned." This is only a few of the many alarming and emotionally abusive things I saw in the 15 months with the current principal. You see, I became his next victim in January, when I brought an issue up to his attention regarding an IEP that wasn't being followed. After I met with him in his interrogation room and shared my concerns, he accused me of creating a hostile work environment and sent me nasty emails and threatening emails. I was now being targeted. However, I did nothing wrong. He told me that I was aggressive, judgmental, and that I affected the culture of the building. The stress and anxiety became so bad that I was forced by my doctor to step back and focus on my health and well-being due to extreme pressure and mental abuse. I was facing each day.
Your time is up.
I left my sweet little kindergarten kids and their families with no teacher and no explanation. And these are the other people I sat in with.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Shar Taverozy.
You pronounced it correctly.
Oh, good.
Hi, my name is Shar. I've been a resident of Plymouth Township for over 32 years. What I'd like to read today is something that my niece wrote for me. She was a student at PCEP. "I've been disheartened to hear about the recent wave of misinformation and fear-mongering showing up at these meetings, especially from people with no real connection to our community. I wanted to share my experience because my time as PCEP was deeply formative in ways I feel led me to a life I am very proud of. One of the best attributes of this school is its unique setup, with three schools, one campus. This allowed for a large, diverse student body where folks were commuting from a much larger area than my elementary or middle school. In middle school, the cliches of the school experience were all very present." All right. "One could easily feel social pressures and a distant need to fit in, to feel welcome. This all changed once I entered PCEP. With new classmates every semester, I was constantly meeting new people and making new friends. By the time I graduated, my friend group included students from many backgrounds very different than mine. As a white cisgender student, I was never made to feel othered. On the contrary, I felt expanded. I felt like I had the freedom to express myself rather than focusing on fitting into a tiny box of what others wanted me to be. In my experience, the teachers supported this feeling of inclusivity. While the school was quite large, the classrooms felt intimate. I'm grateful to the teachers who saw us as individuals and encouraged us to explore our interests. One of my teachers signed me up for Model UN, something I didn't feel confident enough to try on my own. This helped me gain confidence as a public speaker, a skill that I know has launched me into leadership positions in academics and in my professional life. me into leadership positions in academics and in my professional life. My spouse is a trans person of color and generally one of the most kindest and most thoughtful people I know. It's heartbreaking to hear stories of people who hate my spouse for no other reason than plain misunderstanding and fear of the unknown. Being in a diverse, large school that promotes inclusivity is the best way to combat misunderstanding. Through knowing one another and learning alongside one another, we grow. I believe school is for growing. I would hope the School Board also believes school is a place for growth. Thank you.
We're nearing the end of our 30 minutes. We have time for one more comment, and then the rest will have to go into our overflow section. But up next, we have Michelle Mustakis.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Mustakis. I'm an 11-year resident of Canton and a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. As we close out the 24-25 school year, I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity for citizens' comments and for your responses to them. And I'd especially like to thank the Board for standing up for the rights and the dignity of every student, no matter their race, ethnicity, immigration status, or sexual orientation. And it's clear, from the amazing turnout at the last board meeting, that the community also stands with you on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. There isn't even a reporter here from Michigan Advance who had heard of the May 27 outsider attacks on our schools and came to report on our response. She was absolutely gobsmacked by how strongly our community banded together, and she wrote a very positive article on it, which I have over here, which I'll give to you. But what struck me most in that meeting last time were the young LGBTQ-plus people willing to share their very personal, very emotional, and at times heartbreaking stories about their struggles to be accepted as who they are. It's impossible for me to understand how anyone hearing these stories could continue to target these students and seek to rip away what few protections they have left. But there will be those people. In fact, after the last meeting, we were confronted by someone who said that we weren't being diverse because we weren't listening to students who weren't comfortable with LGBTQ-plus students, and these students are afraid to voice their opinions because they don't want to be called homophobes. I don't have time to go into how inane that comment is, but I will say, we'd be happy to listen to those students. I would just ask that each one would be specific on how having a policy that supports LGBTQ-plus students has a direct negative impact on their lives or on their ability to get a good education. Members of the Board, we are heading into an election year in which three positions will be open. The attacks against you and your policies will grow louder and meaner, but our voices will be stronger because they are the voices of empathy and compassion. At our last meeting, we heard the facts about the disproportionate rate of suicide among LGBTQ-plus students. We heard stories from students who had contemplated and even attempted suicide, and we heard a student tell you that your support, your support through your affirming LGBTQ-plus policy saved their life. Who in their right mind would want to pull a literal lifeline away from those students? We believe our community will continue to stand strong against the forces that seek to divide us. We look forward to working with you, and we're going to get a Safe Schools Resolution and Policy passed next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. We're moving on to our administrative reports and recommendations. First up, we have our Finance and Operations Committee with Ms. Minnick. We have actually Action Item Number 250684. Consider a resolution to approve the 2025-2026 proposed budget. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider a resolution to approve the 2025-2026 proposed budget. This is a final reading, and the action item is 250684.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Voss. This was on our agenda for our last meeting, but do we have any other follow-up questions or comments around this resolution? No? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, and moving on to our next item. Ms. Minnick, can you take us through that, please?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, for your consideration, is a pilot furniture purchase. In collaboration with high school principals for the three comprehensive high schools and the Bond Steering Committee, TNP Architecture, our Architect of Record for the Bond Program, has developed a pilot program to evaluate new classroom furniture designed to support flexible, modern learning environments. So with us this evening is Jen Mayno with TNP Architecture, along with Derek Dinkaloo, to share more about this pilot program. Thank you.
Good evening. So we've been working closely with the Bond Steering Committee and the high school principals to develop the new classroom furniture at the park, and classroom furniture that's better going to support that modern learning and teaching and agile classrooms. So far in that process, we've conducted surveys with teachers to get an understanding of how teaching and learning currently takes place in their space. We've brought in sample pieces for staff and student feedback, and we participated in a professional development trip to North Carolina with the Salem principal and two Salem teachers in collaboration with VS America, which is one of the furniture manufacturers that we are considering. And that trip really was heavily focused on agile learning environments. And then we're here today to discuss the next steps in that process, which is implementing pilot classrooms. So there would be one classroom at each high school, and each pilot kit explores a different approach to layout, flexibility. They're intentionally designed to support a range of teaching styles and user preferences. The goal is to let the students and the teachers experience those environments hands-on and reflect on what works, what's not working, and perhaps most importantly, what is working better than what they had anticipated or expected. And sometimes those layouts or pieces that seem unfamiliar at first are the ones that people connect with the most or that they love the most. And these pilot kits, they were curated based on the most well-received pieces during our North Carolina visit, as well as the feedback from those initial user group meetings. So we're still, we're still working through the details of how this pilot is exactly going to operate, but we wanted to bring it up for you guys for board approval to purchase the furniture. But while we work through this, we'll definitely be working through the details of the best way to maximize engagement for teachers and students, and developing a comprehensive feedback loop for how we're going to collect that data. During the evaluation period, the kits will rotate between the three high schools so that all three schools get to experience each layout, and this is just one step in a larger effort. We're working with VS America to bring some of their educational strategies for possible PD opportunities for staff and teachers here at the park, as well as hoping to send another group to the, to the North Carolina trip for continued learning. So all of that being said, the final pricing for the pilot totals at $47,989.61. This pricing does reflect a significant discount that was extended through our partnership with VS America and their dealer partner, Great Lakes Furniture Supply. The furniture purchased through the pilot will continue to be utilized even after the evaluation period, making this a purposeful and practical investment. And next, I would just like to show you what those three pilot kit looks like. Do I do this? Do I operate this? I've done this before. You would think I would know, but. Um, how do we zoom out?
Can we please pinch this thing in a little bit, because I think the zoom is too far out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So as previously mentioned, each kit was designed with a different approach to flexibility and agility, but each kit really can accomplish the same thing. It just, one might feel more familiar to teachers and students than another. So in this kit, this has a combination of individual desks. We've got group tables. We have standing height tables and some soft seating, and then it's just really flexible. It can really support a range of teaching styles and pedagogies. In kit number two, you'll see very similar things, but just the function is the same, but how the, the furniture works is a little bit different. So again, a combination of individual desks with group tables. These tables, in this kit, they flip up and have a writable finish, so if that might be something of value to the teachers or the students, that would be one thing that we're looking to glean from this pilot. Again, some soft seating options as well. And then Pilot Kit Number Three is some individual desks with a few group tables. The neat thing about these group tables is that they are height adjustable, so they go from a sit height to a stand height, so that option is available for students as well. And again, wanting to include some soft seating options. And really, the idea is to, we're going to, we want to try this, to experiment. Maybe some of this stuff doesn't work, but that's the point, is to try it now before we purchase a whole high school worth of furniture like this. And the last, the next slide just starts to show some alternate layouts, and all of these layouts can accomplish any one of these, Socratic seminars, small group collaboration, or direct instruction, but starting to see how flexible this furniture can really be. And then the last slide is just some fun pictures from some of our user group meetings. In the center on the top there, you can see the teachers and students working to design like their dream classroom. In that lower right-hand corner, you have Kim Villarosa dancing with Dr. Brightecker from VS, so really great engagement so far. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. I am actually going to start to my left with Member Ahmed.
Thank you for the information. No questions.
Member Picard?
I just had brought up during our FNO meeting, I was concerned about the casters, you know, the, with the support from those, but you said those were, what was the weight on the chairs?
So everything is commercial-grade, contract-grade. It's tested to BIFMA standards. They have very robust warranties, so it's, this is the, these are the environments that this furniture is made for.
All right, thank you. Yes.
I, in the pictures I see, kids have used this, right? With current technology, with a laptop, a notebook, is it big enough?
So that is part of what this pilot is going to evaluate. So we don't have the furniture yet, but we'll be hopefully purchasing the furniture for them to try in the fall, and that will be one of the things that we'll be experimenting with. Like, do you have enough room for all your supplies? Do you feel like you can easily collaborate? Do you need more space? Do you need less space? So those are the kind of the, the feedback that we'll be looking for.
I do appreciate getting student and teacher feedback in this whole process. My next question is, in terms of potential cost, how many classrooms would this be impacting for outfitting if, whatever segment is chosen, whether it's Option 1, 2, or 3?
So what I imagine will happen is, once we have this pilot and we get the feedback, we probably won't end up with any of those options. It'll be like a combination. So we'll take, we'll take all that feedback, and if they're like, hey, we really like these tables in, in Option 1, but these desks in Option 3, and that's what the feedback that we're looking for. So it probably will not end up looking like any of those three in the end, but we will be replacing almost all the classroom furniture throughout all three high schools.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I had the disadvantage of not joining you guys at the last FNO, so I have a smattering of questions, so please bear with me as I run through this, because this is my wheelhouse. This is where I live. Education, design, and furniture is, so bear with me. I appreciate the, the fact that we are taking this opportunity to pilot furniture before making a substantial commitment to purchasing furniture throughout our high schools. So this is the right thing to do, and I'm glad that we're building that in, in terms of schedule. So I commend you, I commend the district for, for going there. In terms of schedule, I know you're kind of still figuring out when and where this is all happening. We're already into June, almost July, and furniture lead times are long. Are we anticipating that this is going to be implemented at some point next fall, or what's, what's the timing on that?
Everything shown here today is available on Quickship.
Okay.
So it will be available first day of school this September.
Okay, good. That's great. In terms of just exposure and timing for, for student, you know, most bodies or most exposure to each of these, what are we thinking? Is, is, is one teacher kind of taking this on as the rainmaker and saying, "I'm going to test this for the whole year," or does this move from teacher to teacher over several months, or what are we thinking there?
So we have a little bit of a short-end evaluation period, knowing that Salem is the first to get furniture installing next summer.
Yeah.
So right now, the, the plan is to, each school has three weeks with each kit, and then it'll rotate to the next school. I don't, at this point, we don't know if that's one teacher per school, or if we can get two or three teachers per school. Of, of course, like, you, it's your furniture after you buy it, so you'll get to use it as long as, you know, forever. And, but we want to be able to build in time to do the evaluation period and then gather as much feedback as possible, certainly then have, be able to come together again and have those discussions afterwards. Certainly, we can continue to take feedback after that point, but we will have to have final decisions made sometime at the end of 2025, early 2026 at the latest.
And then in terms of just schedule for furniture purchases, what, what does that look like? Is Salem the first high school? Is it then Canton?
Correct.
Can you, can you explain that, that rollout, if you will?
Yes, so Salem will be first, installing next summer, and then the following summer will be Canton, and then the next summer after that will be Plymouth.
Okay. So even in that three-year sort of implementation of furniture, there's still opportunities for learning beyond this pilot.
Absolutely.
So if there's some combination therein of Option 1, 2, or 3 that the district really likes, but hey, we're, there's a learning, we need less casters, you know, Member Picard's point, or more height adjustability, we can make those tweaks in future purchases.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. That's great. My last question, I'm sorry, I'm on a roll.
This is great.
Is around Starkweather. Has Starkweather been touched by furniture yet? I know we had our STEM addition, or STEM renovation and our gym addition. Have they received a full kit of parts?
They have.
Okay.
So Starkweather received their furniture, I want to say, two years ago.
Yeah.
And we did, as a part of this process, we went and toured Starkweather and their furniture, and that, their furniture was also some of the sample pieces that we brought on-site to Canton High School for the teachers and students to evaluate. And just throughout our process so far, we've really landed on VS, which was not the manufacturer that we used at Starkweather.
Okay, all right. I think that hits all of my questions, so thank you very much for your hard work on this.
President Christensen, you've trained us well. We asked many of those same questions in the, in the FNO meeting, so thank you. I, I feel like we did an okay job.
Good job.
So we had a very robust conversation about this in FNO, and I want to thank you for the flexibility that was brought forward in the, the schedule and the process. We had a long discussion around the timing. This furniture needs to be purchased in April, and so there is opportunities to make sure that we've got enough time to evaluate this furniture and make the right choices. We don't want to have a super compressed time, but we also don't want to dictate what that evaluation process is. So the administration has committed to coming back with a, a plan that exposes the maximum number of people and gets the most feedback while keeping the feedback cycles and processes in the, in the loop as we go through this. So that was one of the robust discussions that we had. We also had a discussion that this is a pretty substantial investment. Across the three high schools, this is nearly $6 million in furniture that will be purchased. And the goal is to try to have the same furniture that is used across all three schools so that we have a consistency in experience, because our students move across all those schools. So that is why this pilot is so important in making sure that we've got the right timing. But it, we also had a good discussion around that ability to be flexible, but you don't want to make a radical change after you do this, and all of a sudden Salem's furniture is completely different from the other schools.
Yeah.
What Vice President Sidhu had actually reminded me of one thing, the fit-for-all classrooms. I, I think that when we think about normal student situations, this is fine, but we had some conversations about like science classrooms, and I guess my other question would be on programs like CTE and the CAD programs, where you might have bigger equipment that needs to be on those student desks. Is this designed to accommodate those, or will we have different configurations to support? Is this designed to accommodate those, or will we have different configurations to support that?
No, that's a great point. So I should've mentioned, this furniture specifically is more for like those general classroom types, so for more of those specialized spaces like CTE, art, STEM. Those will have separate discussions with those user groups and take their feedback for what they really need in those spaces. Because we know that that furniture is gonna have to really tailor to the function of those spaces.
Okay, are we then having those conversations and discussions and pilot programs for the same process, for, at the same timeline for Salem? Or how is that gonna work?
So we'll be having the user group meetings in the fall, at the same time that we'll be having user groups for the general classrooms, but there won't be pilot furniture for that.
Okay, so I guess that's one of the things that I wanna make sure that we are getting the right feedback on it, even if we're buying a few small pieces, to be able to facilitate that. I mean, again, I don't wanna dictate how you do guys do your job, but not having a pilot and then buying $6 million worth of furniture is concerning.
Yes, and there's certainly other ways to be able to kinda kick the tires and see that furniture, whether it's bringing in sample pieces for them to kinda keep onsite for a certain amount of time, or going to neighboring districts and seeing how they did it in their new classrooms. So certainly, all things that we're considering and how we maximize that engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I wanna thank you for all the work that you've put in. I think most of my questions have been answered. The one question I had is, you mentioned in there that there may be opportunities for PD?
Yes.
Can you help explain to me, who is a non educator, what kind of PD around furniture would be?
So as a non educator myself, so they have educational strategists, and a lot of their educational strategists are educators, which for me is great, because then they can explain it from that perspective in a way that I'll never be able to understand. But when you have like agile furniture and furniture that's meant to be moved, they really come in, and one, they're explaining the importance and why furniture plays such an important role in health and emotional well-being in students, in addition to supporting teaching and learning. And so they can really, one, start to explain why this, what you're doing is important with this new furniture, and then how, really how to use the furniture. When it's new and you don't know how to, how does this weirdly shaped desk work? Like, they'll show you how quickly and easy it is to rearrange, and just really support the teachers from that perspective. So, and then there's, there's like, they each have like a different approach to. One of their educators really talks about like how movement is so important in the classroom. Another one talks about storage, which sounds really boring, but can be really interesting. And then another educator that talks about just the emotional well-being of learning environments and students.
Okay, thank you very much for the detailed answer.
Absolutely.
May I add to that? I believe that there's maybe a session around using the furniture as a tool for curriculum delivery.
Yes, absolutely.
And just like we would expect, maybe PD around our new technology, it's really great that it's an opportunity to provide some professional development around our physical furniture too.
The reason I'm asking is because we got new office furniture in our office building, no training.
I don't have any questions, I'm just excited to see this coming to our older students. I volunteer at my daughter's elementary, and they have the most amazing furniture. Can move it all around, sit on couches. And to be able to see this coming to our older students, I think it's really exciting. So thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Josh?
First of all, I wanna say I'm sad that I won't be able to experience this new furniture. Some of my questions have already been answered. So I just wanna echo the words that have been said before me, as well as I wanted to say that I love the approach you're taking with this pilot process. And then obviously, I'm just one student, but I wanna say that the writable finish on like tables is really helpful in certain classes such as math or after-school activities for collaboration. I've had the experience in our library areas where, to work with like after-school on math and that sort of thing, to train kids at those very, at similar tables with the writable finish, and it really like bolsters collaboration. And then I wanna just say how cool it's gonna be to have you, like unity across all three schools for the furniture. As someone who's been to all three schools, the furniture is widely vast in its shape, size, and everything. So it's cool to see this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to add the final note that considerations around accessibility in a classroom as well, differentiating heights of tables and chairs, so that all kids can access their education as well.
Thank you for adding that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have teaching and learning with Ms. Rail, our spring data review.
Thank you. And before I do launch into this, I also wanna layer on the fact that collaboration happens between teaching and learning and finance and operations around the professional development. So when professional development organizations work with us, we co-create and customize that PD. So we would be looking at things like small group instruction, how you use the furniture for small group instruction and stuff. So I didn't wanna step on anyone's toes, but you know, we do that work in collaboration with each other. So now with that, it's time to launch into our 24-25 spring data review. Before I welcome Jonathan and give his title, I just wanna kind of frame out how tonight's data review is gonna look a little bit different than it has in the past. And actually, just introduce Jonathan first, but then I'll hand it over to him. And it's my honor to introduce Jonathan Flukes, our Director of Data Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. Jonathan is gonna do the bulk of the presentation tonight. In the past, we've done a piece of data, and then we've kinda talked a little bit about what we've done and then some of the findings we have. What we've done this year is embedded it all together, based on some feedback from the board in previous years, as well as feedback from our Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Also, I wanna frame out that this was done, this presentation was done at the June 4th SPA meeting, and we spent about an hour and a half diving very deeply into the presentation, having some very robust conversation about it. So what you're gonna see tonight is not gonna be an hour and a half, it's gonna be a shortened, higher-level version of the presentation that took place at SPA, which again, all community members are welcome to attend. And then we'll open it up to conversation and questions. Additionally, along with Jonathan, you're gonna see multiple members of the Teaching and Learning Department here tonight, because they'll also be able to answer any questions that you have. So we typically show up as many of the team members are available, and then we'll answer questions and engage in collaborative conversation together. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jonathan, and he's gonna take us through and kinda give us a high-level overview of how our students are, and how our students are doing. Additionally, board members, you have a packet of information that is a companion document that was sent to you in advance of the meeting as well. So Jonathan?
Thank you. Let's try this quicker. All right, perfect timing, all right. So here's just a general update on the purpose of tonight's presentation, really to kind of provide an update on our progress towards our goals and objectives, share the data that we're connecting to those goals and objectives, explain those connections with the work we're doing in the district this year and next year. And also, a quick reconfirmation of the modes of instruction for next year. This really kind of puts it all together in terms of a logic model, in terms of what we've put into the data review here, that could be that happened, the outputs that we have in terms of the presentations, and then the ultimate goals around the improvement of student achievement and growth. So this is our quick verification of our continuity of learning plan, and that we have in-person instruction for all students in early childhood to post-secondary for next year, and a virtual option for students in grades four through 12.
And as a reminder, we do this because at the current time, until the requirement expires, any federal funds to be able to capture and continue to seek and receive federal funds, this is something that we're asked to do every year. So thank you.
This is just a refresher of our strategic goals that we'll be connecting to, and the specific objectives within teaching and learning that these data connect to in terms of student learning and growth, and Objective 2.1, student support, engagement, and well-being. So we're gonna see a lot of the connections in those two objectives tonight. So this is kind of a nice overview page of what you'll be seeing tonight, the kinds of, the different kinds of data we'll be presenting. And also a reminder that this is really high-level satellite data, so this isn't everything we have, this isn't everything that gives us the information we need to make decisions, but it is a high-level satellite view to help us show patterns potentially in what we're seeing, and also help us point, point us in general direction so we can dig deeper for further investigation around these different topics. So we'll be talking all these things tonight. And we're also embedding, you'll see, a little bit more rounder data picture, I think, this year than in past years, so you'll see additional data points that we haven't shared in past presentations. So here's the big, big overview about the data that you'll be seeing for tonight. So in general, we're seeing an improvement in attendance, which is good. And that's gonna be a continued focus for next year, reducing chronic absenteeism. Behavior incidents you'll see have reduced, but you'll see also the severity of those, some of the behavior incidents have not reduced significantly in prior years. Student growth mindset, emotion regulations, and student survey participation are gonna be continued focus areas around our SEL and behavior competencies. And then you're gonna see also that student achievement shows positive trends in high performance and graduation rate, grades, AP exams, overall NWA achievement, and also early literacy skills. But also, don't wanna discount the fact that we also want to focus on and highlight the focus on different instructional strategies and practices as being continued focus areas to support all students at PCCS. So before we get into some of the connected data to the strategic goals and objectives, I wanna just remind the community about the makeup of our student population here in the district. So we'll start with race and ethnicity, just as a reminder, these haven't changed significantly in the last few years, but we do have these populations of students and the approximate percentages within our community that we serve every day. Additionally, we have also groups of students who are economically disadvantaged, have an IEP or are multilingual learners. And these are approximate percentages and counts of students in those groups. And students can be in more than one of these groups, as well, just as a reminder. A newer dataset, or newer information that we've shared, I think, in previous meetings, but not in these data presentations, is about also the vast complexity of the cultures and languages also within our district. They aren't captured by those demographics that we just shared. So there are over 60 or more languages spoken in the district, and I wanted to share the top 20, in addition to English, that are spoken within the district, just to give you a sense of that difference, that large range of diversity in languages and cultures. So now to attendance. As I noted earlier, that you'll be seeing some improvements, but I wanted to start now, as we go into each of these data points, is talking about the key activities that we've been doing around these different data points that will precede each of the presentations of data. So these are the things we've been doing around attendance to help improve those attendance rates and reduce chronic absenteeism in terms of professional development around evidence-based practices. And strategies are included in all of our buildings' improvement plans. We've increased proactive communication with families, as well as automated communications directly from our MyStar system to report daily attendance to families, as well as reducing barriers that prevent students from coming to school, including increased identification of students who might be eligible for McKinney-Vento services, those are students who are homeless. And then we have continued specific supports at the elementary, middle, and high school level as well. And some of those high-level satellite data pieces that we can look at are attendance rate, so the percent of days that students attend every year. And we're seeing consistent movement in a positive direction for all of our student groups, which is good. And as a reminder, if a student is not in class, they're absent. So keep that in mind, it doesn't matter for what reason. So attendance is being in class and participating in instruction in the curriculum. And with our metric of chronic absenteeism, a good thing is that rate going down, because that's the percent of students who are considered chronically absent, which is missing 10% or more of your school days. So that also is decreasing in all groups as well, and showing positive movement. Here's our, the activities around behavior that we've been implementing this year. So focusing on positive supports and programs for students, and linking that to our MTSS framework. We've used Panorama to kind of help document and support those behavior plans for students in these different ways, as well as specific supports at the elementary, middle, and high school level in terms of staff and systems in place.
And one thing I just wanna remind the board is that throughout this year, at multiple presentations, we've been sharing much deeper look into all of these things. Remember, the elementary, middle, and high school teams have come twice this year, each level. So six different times we've presented at the board to share more in-depth about these. So while we're just kinda hitting the highlights tonight, that depth of work was shared earlier as well.
So as I mentioned earlier, the number of incidents has decreased compared to the last four years. This is the number of incidents reported for the last three years, and the 4,160 is this year's. But you'll see that incidents that resulted in suspension didn't necessarily go down compared to last year. So looking at that red line to the right, which is incidents that resulted in a suspension or expulsion, compared to last year, they didn't really go down and went up just by two. So that just points to the efforts we need to make to focus on reducing the severity of those incidents and supporting students.
This also speaks to our ongoing work around social-emotional learning and our, you know, like emotion regulation, all of those skills that we talk about through our learner profile, and all of the work through our SEL that really helps support our students to be proactive on their behaviors, know how to address their behaviors so that we don't get to this point. One thing we have seen, though, and we continue to see, is that the behaviors that are happening are big. So you've heard that from our community members. You've heard our community members talk about when behaviors happen, they are large behaviors, they are sometimes aggressive behaviors. So as we continue this work, we'll continue to do that proactive strategy and layering out of all of those additional things in advance.
Perfect timing to segue into social-emotional competencies. So those specific things that are related to those that are happening, that happened this school year, was also part of our continuous improvement process at each building level in identifying a sense of belonging as one of those goals. Resources and time was created in the schedules to support that work, as well as use of Panorama to document and support the interventions that we're providing for students. Roles, such as the behavior specialists, counselors, social workers, student success specialists, deans, and MML teachers also supported that work, as well as the expansion of the therapy dog program and the implementation of equity cohorts in all school buildings. So our primary method of reviewing those data are looking at our Panorama survey results. So this are, these are the topics that are included on the K2 Teacher Perception Survey. These haven't changed since the last few years that we've done it, so they should be familiar to you. And then I'll also share the topics for the student survey on the next slide. And as a reminder, the diversity inclusion topic is only for students in middle and high school only, but the other topics are addressed at all levels. And so we'll start with our K2 survey, Teacher Perception Survey, and share some key findings, and then share the results in our charts and graphs. So student skills and competencies were rated more favorably in all topics compared to the fall. And we noted some areas of strength in our emotion regulation. Engagement and learning strategies made, showed the greatest increase compared to the fall. And a potential area of focus would be self-management. That was the one that was least positively rated by teachers. So looking at those findings, you'll see, these are those topic areas listed here. They're sorted by the percent responding, or percent favorable, as well as that change in percent compared to the fall. Now we'll move to our third to fifth grade student survey. So students rate themselves more than... So students rated themselves more favorably on about half of the areas of topics they were assessed on. And as compared to the national sample, seven of the eight topics were at that 60th percentile or higher. So when we point to some of those strength areas, we can see supportive relationships, self-management, and teacher-student relationships were rated highly, and perseverance showed the greatest increase compared to the fall. And we also noted emotion regulation and growth mindset were areas that we might want to focus on going forward. And those results look like this, again, same format, the topics are listed, sorted by percent favorable, that blue bar. And then with the student survey, we get that comparison to the national sample, which is that third column. And then the fourth column is the change from fall to spring. This is how we kind of start to focus on those areas of focus, as well as where our strengths are. We also asked students about how adults can help them at school. And so these are, again, this isn't a sophisticated analysis, but it does share some of the topics that they brought up when they said, "How can adults help you at school?" So this gives us a sense of some of those words that they mentioned in the responses. Now to our six to eight population. Students rated themselves favor, similarly, or more favorably, most of the areas, as you'll see in the next slide. And the areas of strength are supportive relationships, diversity inclusion, and self-management. And the least positively rated were teacher-student relationships and emotion regulation and growth mindset. So when we look at the results, you'll see, once I click that, you'll see that, there it is. Again, sorted from percent favorable to least favorable, with a national comparison, and then the change from the fall. So this is what our middle school students said, and how teachers or other adults at school can help you. Is there anything that sticks out to you? In this, well, I don't know if you've ever interacted with a middle school student. I have had the pleasure of dealing with two of them at the same time in my household. And sometimes, one student will write the same thing 300 times. And that's what happened here. So that's why spyware got lifted up, because one student was very emphatic about the removal of spyware from their device on school property. But again, so again, that's why we, it's important to kind of dig deeper when we see those satellite things and jump to conclusions. So that was quickly noted when we looked at the responses that were linked to spyware. And finally, it was just one student that mentioned it. Our ninth through 12th survey didn't have as much participation as the middle school and elementary. So I don't want to talk about key findings, because we don't want to, it's hard to generalize when you have a low percentage of respondents. But I will want to share the charts and graphs, just so we see that information, so you can see what they did respond. But we don't want to draw any conclusions with a small sample size. We had about 5% total, when we talk about all of our ninth through 12th graders taking the survey. So these are the results, again, sorted by topic, percent favorable, with a national comparison, and the change from the fall. But again, keep in mind, we had a much lower response rate this spring. And again, here's some of the words that they mentioned, again, we had a small number of students. No single student seemed to kind of commandeer the responses at the high school level, though. Our family-school relationship survey, we also participate, had our community participate in that as well. We also had about the similar response rate when we think about all of the families in our community that attend the school. So we do want to caution against drawing significant conclusions from these results. But we want to share some of those, and there will be a link to the full results in this slide deck. So you can look at each of the items and kind of make those, see what the responses were to each individual item. But these were the topic areas that were addressed. And some of the things you'll see in the survey response, specific items around the community priorities and strengths and opportunities are things like focusing on instruction, facilities, student nutrition, safety, things like that, are part of the community parties and strengths and opportunities. There were a few open-ended responses on the family-school relationship survey, so I picked one here to share regarding what was the single most positive aspect of the school or district, because I think it was a good representation of some of the ideas that they had shared in the survey. And again, here's links to additional information about the survey, about how Panorama safeguards data, as well as links to each of those individual reports at each of the levels, and a copy of the survey as well. Now we'll move on to student achievement. And this year, we talked about semester grades, AP test scores, graduation rate, NWA map, and DIBELS, which we haven't talked about in much detail until now. So some of the things we've been doing around student achievement. So on the left side, you'll see these are some of the focused practices and systematic things we've been doing to increase proficient readers and mathematicians. UFLI, collaborative classrooms, Envision Math, Tier One and Tier Two reading and math supports, as well as some of our PSYOP strategies in our, for our MLL students. Also strengthening the coaching model to support improving Tier One and Tier Two instruction, additional focus on equitable grading, our eWIM system at the high schools, and then the continued development of interest-based courses for students in high school. So some of the links to student achievement, so this is the semester grade performance in terms of the percent of students who are passing their courses for the last four years by each semester. So you'll see a positive trend there. And also, as Beth mentioned, this was highlighted in more detail at a previous presentation for the high school team in the past. AP performance is doing well, in terms of 88% of students, or of AP exams, earned a score of three or higher. And that means that students could potentially earn advanced placement or college credit at the institution they attend. This is separated, this is displayed by content area, so they're kind of grouped into math and computer science, history and social studies, social sciences, world languages, science, and English, language, and literature. We did have students that took the 2D art and design, however, there are too few to display in a way that would be informative. Our graduation rate is improving as well. This is actually a longer term, this is a 10-year comparison from 2015 to 2024 for the four-year graduation rate for each of our high schools. And we have kind of a comparison to the statewide to see kind of how that compares to students around the rest of the state. So positive improvement in each of our schools, and a drastic improvement at Starkweather. Additionally, students might take more than four years to graduate. So the state also calculates a five-year graduation rate, and we see a similar positive trend, even more drastic for our Starkweather students, who might need some extra time to meet those state requirements for graduation. Moving on to NWA, so I want to also reiterate the purpose of NWA, and we'll talk about the purpose of DIBELS as well when we get to that. So just to reiterate that it does serve a different purpose than our state assessment. So it's a different kind of assessment than the M-Step or the PSAT. These are designed to show student achievement and growth as comparison to typical students in a national sample. So they're descriptive, not prescriptive, so they don't tell us where students should be, but where really they are. They're not proficiency assessments. But they do give us good information that can help us support all these different activities and structures we have in place in the district. And just, we don't need to read through everyone, this entire slide. These are some of the big concepts and terms that sometimes are affiliated with assessments like NWA and NWA map. So these are adaptive assessments in general. Some of the words sometimes are kind of foreign, so I wanted to highlight the RIT, which is the skill score that NWA uses, and achievement percentile, which is a comparison to students, similar students in their grade level, and whether or not a student met kind of their typical expectation or typical growth as compared to similar students. So those are the three things that we'll see in the next few slides. But I wanted to include some of the other concepts that sometimes come up when we talk about benchmark assessments like NWA map. A nice study that NWA completed this summer before the school year started highlighted the fact that recovery is, they're seeing recovery still present. Those needs are still present for students who are affected by the COVID pandemic. Their study found, and these are good things for us to see in that satellite level, to say, hey, this is what we saw in our national sample data, so we can then say, are we seeing the same thing here in the district? So in their study, they showed that middle school students and low-income, Black, and Hispanic students were the most impacted by the pandemic, and still have some months still behind to kind of catch up to where they might have been in the past. So this chart shows the number of months needed to catch back up to where students were before the pandemic happened. So this helps highlight where we might need to look when we look at our own data, but also support some of those efforts we have in place and are focusing on for the next year to strengthen those teaching and learning activities. So when we look at our data, we'll see that PCCS is a high-performing district when we look at the comparison to the nation. And all grades did perform well above or at that national norm in reading and math. And most student groups performed within that national average range or higher. And in terms of growth, most grade levels metrics exceeded that national norm. And most student groups, but not all, performed within that national growth prediction, predicted range or higher. When we look at that comparison to the nation, this is that RIT score, that scale score that NWA provides. So this is the comparison from Plymouth Canton, which is the colored circles for reading and math, of reading on the left, math on the right. And the gray is the national average for each grade level. So this is kind of that comparison for where we perform relative to the nation. And then when we look at our winter achievement, this is for each of our major student groups, grade level and student demographic groups. This is the median student percentile. So this is the ranking, so to speak, in that national sample. So this is the median ranking for each grade level at the top. And in the background is the kind of that grayish area represents kind of that national average range of 40 to 60 percentile. And on the bottom, you'll have the different student groups. And just as a reminder, NWA doesn't provide student group norms, they just have norms for all students. So each of these student groups who might be traditionally underperforming are being compared to the national sample of all students. So this is achievement, and now we can look at growth in terms of what NWA predicts as typical growth for students who score like a student from fall to winter. So this is the same group level compare, or group level display, grades at the top, student groups at the bottom. This metric is the percent of students who met what NWA might see as typical growth from the fall to winter. This is the percent of students that met that growth. It doesn't mean they didn't grow if they didn't meet it, it just means this is where we expect students to grow, how many students or what proportion met that growth. Again, the gray bar is kind of that average range of 40 to 60% in the national sample for comparison. And DIBELS, our last achievement metric. So we haven't really talked in detail about what DIBELS is. So that is an acronym that stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So you can probably imagine what kinds of things we are asking students to do in the DIBELS assessment. So this is about, really designed to detect risk at kind of the core, basic reading fundamentals of phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. So these tests aren't designed to render judgments about school quality or teacher. This is about which students are at risk and might need additional support. So students in grades K-5 participate, and those who might already be receiving literacy support in middle school are also participating in DIBELS. We're doing this fall, winter, and spring, and it takes about one minute per skill to assess. So it's not a huge pull from instruction time. And it can range from between two and four skills, depending on the grade and time of year. And then these are the categories that the DIBELS provides. And so that red and yellow, those are the students that might need some additional support based on the studies behind those DIBELS ratings. And then the next slide, I'm, we're going to collapse those two categories together to see how did that change over the course of this past year. So this is the at-risk or some risk, so those students who might need some additional support for each of the separate skills at each grade level. So on the far left, this represents phonemic, phoneme segmentation fluency. And that's for students in our young fives and kindergarten. And the percent of students who are needing additional support in the fall, at the beginning of the year, compared to the end of the year, in the spring. So that reduced from 63% needing additional support to 41%. So that's kind of how to read these slides. And right below that is our first grade group in that same skill. And then if you go to the next column, letter name fluency, kindergarten, first grade, nonsense word fluency, are the next two, oral reading fluency, accuracy, and then maze, which is a comprehension task. So you can see there's a positive trend in terms of fewer students needing support within that school year. Our outlier there is our fourth grade team, and we saw that actually in some of our other slides. So we might keep an eye on that fourth grade group, which is now going to be fifth graders next year, because there might be some things we're seeing in the data that they're not quite as high performing as the other grade levels. So it's something to mark, and we'll continue to look at that through the next year. So based on all of that information, these are the things we're going to continue to focus on next year. Continued work on, we want to see those attendance rates increase and reduction of chronic absenteeism. And some of that work can be done through increasing the social and emotional competencies. That can produce, that can have impacts on attendance, as well as behavior, as well as improving school culture and climate, and working hard to track that and to move forward both at the student and staff level. Implementing differentiated instructional strategies to help those students who might be needing that additional support, as well as all students in all classes, achieve and access the curriculum and the content. As well as shifting the multilingual learner supports to a different service delivery model at the secondary level. Continuing those equitable grading practices in middle school and high school. And then focusing on ongoing professional learning for all staff to support these focus areas that we mentioned, that we've been working on this year and next year. And that should be it. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We'll start to my left with member Amen.
Thank you very much for all of this. I have a couple of questions. I'll start with, when you talk about focus areas for 25, 26, and the differentiated instruction, can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure, I can take that piece, as well as, we have the level leaders here, the Executive Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Denise Lilly, and the Executive Director of Middle School Education, Anthony Ruela. And I'll kind of step in for the Executive Director of High School Education as well, because he is off right now with a death in the family. So a lot of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years is around small group instruction. So embedded into our curriculum in multiple areas through K-12 instruction, are designed elements and professional learning around small group instruction. So what that looks like is a teacher might launch a lesson in a classroom, and then break students up into small groups to differentiate the needs of the group. So one group will be working on one strategy while another group is working on another. They'll focus the groups around, this can happen in reading, it happens in math. We're building in some additional structures in the middle school around building thinking classrooms. We're doing a lot of work, you've heard us talk in the past, about PSYOP strategies, uncovering content for students. Those strategies are initially created for English language learners, but they're good for all students. So as we work across all of our content areas, differentiated instruction basically means ensuring that each student gets what they need. So in a classroom, generally you have thirty-ish students, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty students. You can think about those in three levels typically. You usually have students that are right on grade level. You have some who are needing some additional support. And you have some students who kind of already have the content. So teaching just to one area or one focus area doesn't meet the needs of all students. So what we do is we really work diligently with our teachers to provide professional learning around how to do that intentionally in the classroom. I'm going to see if there's anything the team wants to add as I'm just looking to see if they're walking up for anything as well. But those are, there's a much deeper, we could sit for hours and talk about differentiated instruction. You're welcome to come and hang out with me anytime you'd like to geek out about it. But that's just kind of a high-level overview. But it's really thinking about what are those multiple strategies used in a classroom, all the way down to individualization. So there are times when a teacher is working side by side. You walk into a classroom, teacher's working side by side with a student while other students are doing tasks. It's the intentional use of classroom time for that. Also pushing in from our instructional coaches to model those strategies and then help to kind of hand those off to our staff as well. So is there anything the team would like to add? Are we good back there? All right.
Thank you. You got a thumbs up. That's great. And you might regret the offer to allow me to geek out with you. Anytime. Is it okay to go to my second question? Okay, my second question is around the equity cohorts. Could you tell me a little bit more about that? I believe we heard about them previously, but if you could tell us.
And Katie did share about it. I asked her, and I know I'm going to get a question about this. I might have clarified. So she can speak more eloquently about it if she wants to come up and talk about that. But I'll try my best and you can yell at me. So these are groups that have been formed at each building. They consist of staff, administrative staff, teaching staff, and non-teaching staff are all part of these groups. And they meet monthly and share some ideas for how they can create more equitable things in their building and inclusionary practices in their building. I don't know if I've done a fair example of that, but.
And as Katie is joining, we'll also just talk about ensuring, again, the term equity means ensuring that everyone has what they need. So Katie will kind of uncover it a little bit more.
Yeah, Jonathan did a great job. Read the email that I sent him earlier, so that's good. Our equity teams this year focused a lot on sense of belonging and how that relates to all of the areas that Jonathan talked about. How sense of belonging helps with our students when they attend school, how it gets them to attend school, how that helps with academics, how that helps with behavior, how that helps with our discipline processes. So we did that through, this year bringing in a lot of guest speakers from the community. Polly Basrush talked earlier about how PFLAG presented to some district staff. That was the building equity cohort teams. We had members from the CIT Coalition, the Hindu Temple of Canton, the United Way of Plymouth, Northwest, the Ark of Northwest Wayne County, and a couple other groups. So we were really trying to learn a lot about the different diverse groups within our community and how we can best support those groups within our schools.
And thinking through the lens of the fact that we have twenty-four buildings in the district plus our early childhood programs, each building has unique needs. I mean, we're one PCCS. And, you know, we talk about three schools, one park. But we have, every building looks a little different, so the needs are a little different. So the building equity leadership teams come together to look at their data within the building and say, what do we specifically need to focus on based on our data? How do we use our data to inform that? And how do we leverage our resources? So we set aside resources for these teams specifically to use within their schools to meet the needs that they identify within their schools. In some places, it might look like some curriculum materials that are specifically designed for representation of populations within that school. Other schools may look at celebrations and events that bring community members in. One of the things we're really doing is thinking about that three-legged school, school, home, and community, and, you know, school, families, and community, and how we bring the community in to help support what we're doing. Because we know we can't do this alone. So it's important for us to open our doors both ways and have those additional professional development moments.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. I will pass it on because I feel like otherwise I'll keep asking questions.
I've got my mind going on a whole other thing now. I did have a question. I will go ahead, pass it on, and I will come up with my question because you got me thinking about something else. So if you'd like to go ahead, I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. We had like an hour-long discussion in SPA, so I appreciated the deep dive in SPA. I'll just reiterate for my colleagues and the community that we did talk about some of the gaps that we continue to see. But I do want to congratulate the team on the improved attendance rates, course passing rates, AP, and graduation rates. So round of applause for those targeted improvements because we want to make sure that we continue working on those because obviously whatever you're investing in that needs to continue to move further. With that, when we got the deeper dive behind the scenes, the board got detailed documents for each grade level. And the gaps are unsettling. And I shared that in SPA as well. You know, sitting here for seven years and continuing to see the gaps, it breaks your heart that our kids are still not, not all, remember, but we are here for all kids. But some are not getting what they need. And so we continue to challenge Dr. Merritt and her team in terms of what do you need to do differently? What can the board support you with? And, you know, so we had those discussions. There are no easy solutions. This is public education. Anyone in education knows there are no silver bullets that are going to solve these complex problems. One of the things I did share was learning more about how the family engagement unit is working or going to work with families and students and staff to narrow those gaps because I feel like we don't have a clear picture yet. And the question I'll bring up tonight is, what professional development changes are you planning for next year knowing that you have this data in front of you? And how will teachers get the time and support they need given that they have very limited time? We also talked about, we can't keep adding to teachers' plates. You teach all day and you do your professional learning. You do your lesson planning, grading. And by the way, come on a Saturday or come after school. So intentionally, what systems are you breaking to allow for that space and time? And I don't know, Judy, you were there. I don't know, we came up with some like interesting saying in terms of like, what scheduling do you need to look into? And the board is willing to look at some drastic changes in traditional schedule models, traditional calendars. I just need to know, you know, from your mind, from your team's mind, what are you thinking? Or is this something that you need more time for? And you'll come back to us in terms of, these are the barriers we need support in board. These are the barriers we need support in community, families. These are the barriers we need support in staff. So I just need a little bit more around that.
So definitely, as we talked earlier, more time is always of essence. When you think about, the path that we're on is working to ensure data literacy across the system, having data cohorts and actually knowing the data that you're looking at as you're drilling down. We're drilling down deeper and trying to understand through our panorama the supports that need to be in place for students from various demographic groups, the supports that need to be in place for the adults that are serving the students in those various demographic groups. Looking at our dynamic plan, we've been intentional about the action plan. Instead of saying, this is what we're doing over six years to look at each year, it gives us that cycle of evaluation. And to that point, it's so wide right now. And how do we continue to narrow down and take some things off the plate? We're not always as successful because the needs are so great. We add on often and don't take off. And then you're mile-wide but not as deep. And so that work, as we talk about that cycle over the summer, is continuing to narrow that focus and focusing on what individual groups need, what individual teachers need. So that ask would come if that is in the form of resources for board support when we brought data before to say, hey, we want to change intervention and move into this direction. Now that we're in the direction, for example, with instructional coaches, how do we strengthen that model? So maybe that it's a little bit more fidelity of implementation across the system if we're seeing some gains as people are using that coaching model. So again, takes time. It's deliberate. It's a cycle. And when we need the support, then we're prepared to ask for that support year by year. When we look at that dynamic plan review, as we get, we've kind of been doing that work on our project plans, our dashboards that we'll get to. The idea is that we'll get into a rhythm where we start the year to say, this is what our focus is because of the data that we're seeing at the end of the year. And then tie all of our presentations to that. And then be prepared as we go into budget season. If there's something that needs to shift in terms of our delivery model and the financial resources that need to align with that, that would be our ask at that point.
Thanks. I'll also mention that I did bring up a concern, or more of a wondering in terms of the K-2 teacher perception data that we see, how much of that is influenced by teacher bias? And what is the district doing to mitigate that bias? Because everyone has bias. I mean, that's just part of human nature. But how are we intentionally looking at our lens and removing those biases to make sure that we get a more accurate picture of our students? So that conversation was had, and they are working on that. So I was told, I just wanted to point that out. Yeah, that's it for me right now. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a few questions here. I want to, you know, thank my fellow colleagues for bringing up some important issues. One is really around the data on slide thirty-four. This is really around the Panorama survey data for grades nine through twelve and then our community and family. So kind of, Mr. Flukes, you've mentioned, hey, there's just not enough here to actually put together some key findings. So one thing that we talked about at Student Voice in Action, we put together that panel where a lot of students were able to provide feedback on how maybe we might be able to shift this or change this in terms of student participation. Are we going to be taking any of that feedback and implementing that into this next year and hopefully see some changes? How does this compare nationally in terms of, you know, student participation in other districts?
I mean, locally, it's a struggle. I've talked to colleagues in other districts and having their high school students participate, it's a struggle constantly. So just locally in the southeastern Michigan area, it's, you know, all the districts are struggling with this as well, just to paint that picture.
Yep. And some of the feedback that came back from the students, not the students in SVA, but also the student focus groups that the high school staff were talking about when they were here, is number of administrations during the year. When they're administered, because also it's the protected time students are looking for, for their academic support. So thinking about the methodology and how we do it, but also a lot about the questions and how they're asked. There was a lot of feedback from our students about the language and the question that was asked in the language, their understanding of the questions, what the questions were seeking to get and stuff like that. So we're working with Panorama who's revamping some of those things for us. We're looking at how we might beta-test some of those things with students. But we're also really looking at the survey administration, when it takes place, how it takes place, because especially when you get into the secondary level, there's a lot packed into a year, right? I mean, there is for every level, but when you especially look at secondary, six classes, moving, all of those things. So what we're doing over the summer, back to a lot of people's questions, is beginning as soon as all of this comes out, and even before then. You know, the teaching and learning team has been designing next year's professional development since February, or since January and February. So what we do is we look at this and we layer on and we layer on. So by the time probably around mid-July hits, we've already decked out most of what's happening next year. And then we just layer on additional things. So when we're looking at that, we're also looking at those survey administrations and things. So all of that is happening and, you know, you guys want to come hang out all summer? You know where to find us.
I love all these invitations to hang out. I think some of us would take you up on that. So I do appreciate that background. I guess my other wondering around just implementation. We love our year-over-year data. So are we seeing this drop off, you know, from past participation levels? Or is this, are we seeing, although it's still a small group, but it's a tiny increase? Are we seeing anything like that?
In terms of like year, yeah, it's kind of all over the place. I think part of it is, you know, when it happens locally, like what's happening that week in the high schools can impact that. So, you know, it might interfere in the spring one where we have the window right now with some of the course preparation students are making for the following year. So they don't want to lose that time if they're needing to then use that advisory time to help figure out what they're going to be doing next year. So it's thinking differently about when we ask it, how often we ask it. We're hoping, you know, so.
Just kind of add to that. I know we did a year where we tried to go two. And then we got the feedback that.
Survey fatigue.
Right.
Too many surveys.
Going back to one, and now it's really about what time of year is appropriate. So I think this actually was a drop-off year in, right?
Okay, fair enough. And then just my, I mean, albeit Starkweather's at sixty-four percent in terms of response rate versus PSEP. So they're doing something, right? You know, are we learning from them? Is there something that we can glean from our Starkweather members and implement at the park?
I think you've been hearing, which to your point, you want the year-over-year data, but beyond just survey fatigue, I think we've got just different ways of reaching. Because we've gotten a little, I'll say, a little PTSD around surveys in our community right now at the high school level. And so we have to just really call that piece out because as students are saying, the feeling is, are you even listening to our surveys? And so maybe just kind of a relaunch of how do we truly gather that information and share? You know, this is worth your time to invest your voice in.
And I did listen to the feedback from the SVA when Panorama team came out and some of the comments. And so I prepared kind of a student-friendly newsletter about what's in the survey and how the data are used and what other students think about it. So that's ready to go as we launch it next year because I think that meeting happened like in the middle of the window this spring. So I didn't really have time to impact that, this current spring's administration. But we can use some of that maybe to help spread the word on what really is this survey about and why it's important for me to respond.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'll pass on.
So I want to echo President Christensen's, the participation rate is abysmal. And I guess one of the questions I wanted, and I looked at the raw data, maybe I didn't see it. Do we have the breakdown by year of students?
Breakdown of.
Just number of participations.
We have it in, yeah, we have all the historical data should be available in the surveys. Maybe not in this presentation, but they should be publicly available.
What I'm curious about is whether there's something developmentally or age-appropriate or age-focused in the process. Because when you look at six through eight, you're at eighty-six percent. And then when we get to ninth grade, I mean, maybe I'll haul all one hundred and forty-three of these students are ninth graders. And there's zero, tenth, eleventh, and twelfths on there. But it just is amazing to me that we go from eighty-six percent to three. And so it just, there's something that is broken in this, in this process. So I'd love to understand what's happening with that. Obviously, I also see some struggles with the family surveys. You know, maybe we can do some pre-messaging around that process, talk about how that stuff's done, how it's used. I would be interested. I know that our high school survey is substantially lower than it's been in the past. I can't remember what the numbers were for participation in the family surveys. But it just, participation rate means that this is essentially useless for us, which you've articulated, because we can't draw any conclusions from this. I did have some questions about the K-2 survey rates. First of all, I want to commend the administration because I know it is a teacher-administered survey. And I want to commend them for the participation rates. We saw participation rates in the past below ninety percent, and that's really unconscionable. But now we're up at the ninety-seven percent range, and that's great. I also was really struck by the increase that we saw in that level. Can you give us any feedback as to what we saw as those increases in the surveys for the K-2 cohort?
Yes, that's a, we've seen that every year. And frankly, with those students at that level, that's, a lot of that's developmental. If you think of a kindergartner and their emotional regulation abilities in September compared to that in April, it's much different.
That's the comparison of the data.
So we've seen that every year, and we've seen that in the national information that Panorama shared with us, that students get better over the year. So it's good that we're seeing that same pattern because we're continuing to support students develop throughout the school year. So that's expected, and we're continuing to see that, which is good.
So maybe I missed, was not understanding it. When I look at the K-2 data, it was changed since school year 2024, 2025. What is that, what's the comparison on that?
That's from the fall.
So it's a comparison against the fall?
Yeah, it's the same students compared to the fall.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So that's that, within your developmental change.
Okay. Just two other questions. One is on the attendance surveys. Really good. We had a great discussion in sidebar conversation. If you're really interested to see the attendance rates. If you're really interested to see the attendance rates, especially on the chronic absentees of excused versus unexcused. You know, and what we're, the anecdotes that we're seeing is a lot of families are taking their students out for vacations or whatever it is, and that can create a chronic unexcused absence process from this measurement perspective. What's important to me is to see that data, especially for the subgroups, whether we have unexcused absences. Do we have a lot of problems with unexcuse or do we have a problem with, for whatever reason, students are out there? They're sick, they're going on vacation, they have, for whatever reason, other unexcused absences, or sorry, other excused absences versus unexcused. So I don't know if that's possible to get that data.
I mean, that is in there. So we have to work with student services, make sure that we fully understand how those are recorded and make sure they're recorded consistently. Exactly, you know, I don't know. I'm not saying they are, you know, to make sure that if a teacher puts down excuse for this student, that that means the same thing in every building, in every class and whoever's recording attended. So we would want to make sure that that's consistent and then we can probably look at, you know, if there are patterns in that. So that information is available and known and we can look at that. But the bottom line for why we report it like this is because that's how, you know, the state reports it. And essentially, it's if you're not in class, you're not participating in the curriculum, in instruction, in engaging in class. So that's why it's important that if you're not there, you're not there. So that's what, that's the first thing we want to look at. Our student's not there. But you're right, we could look at to see if there's patterns and.
I think there's, the resolution to those are two different things. One is a truancy problem and the other is a communication to the family's problem and the importance of education.
But I think still it is still a truancy problem. So whether it's a verified excuse or not, to Jonathan's point, you have to be in school to learn. So that is what our education about this year, as we've been going on this trend, if you're seeing ten days to success across the marquee. Regardless if I say this is a value in my family that I'm going to take students out, you're still, students are still missing school.
We also may have students that are sick, you know, they have long-term illnesses or other things. So we have to be conscious of those situations and that, you know, that isn't necessarily correlated. Unexcused absences are not necessarily correlated with scores and testing, but it does impact them in that process. But sometimes students can't, can't address that. So I just think there's.
And that's why you, when students are absent and that's, the verified and unverified comes with the ability to provide work for students. So although they're not physically there, they're able to get that work made up. If they're sick, we don't want them to come to school. And so definitely in general, the education is around the importance of just being present with your teacher in class.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I just want to add on the excused versus unexcused. Not all students, but some students like have access to be able to go in and mark themselves as excused by their parents. So like using that data point also, you brought up sickness, but there's other factors as well that kind of disregard that as a valuable data point.
Okay. Well, I think that would be the question. Thank you. Are you confessing something there, Josh?
No, no, I know some students that do that.
I know a guy. Thank you. So my, my last question was in the detailed data. When we saw the NWA growth trend fall to winter, a lot of those numbers were declining, especially at the higher grades. Can you give us any input as to why we see that decline from fall to winter in higher grades? And it's, it's been consistent across the years and it seems to be getting worse.
And one thing I can point to is that NWA study about, their study was seeing that the middle school students are most highly affected from COVID still and are requiring the most. So that could be kind of effects of that. It's hard to point that out because even being an external test, we don't control what's on it. And it's, so it's hard to pinpoint that with an assessment like that. But, you know, as we get stronger with our own internal assessment practices, we can maybe pinpoint where, why those things might be happening. Because it's not designed to assess like seventh grade math, for example. It's just like, what is a student's math capabilities? Is how it's designed. So it makes it a little bit difficult to pinpoint why. So that's why as we build up our own internal strategies and practices, we'll be built better able to potentially identify that. But it could be related to COVID as well. So those are things that we'll continue to investigate.
And my last thing I wanted to say is I want to commend the administration and the district for the work that we're doing around differentiation. It's been a hot button for me and for many in our community and it's really great to see an intentional work in that front. So thank you.
Thank you. Number Westra?
A lot of great work and a lot of great discussion. I want to thank everyone. And I want to thank you especially for that languages slide. Thank you for putting that in. My only question is, everything, based on all the discussion, a question I have is, is that counting only the languages spoken by MLL students or is that languages in the home as well?
That's based on the home language survey that families take when they enroll. So that's, and.
So that's whether or not the student is in.
Not necessarily, but most likely that might lead to depending on the students when they are assessed on the language survey, or I'm sorry, the WIDA and the other instruments that help identify whether a student is eligible for those services. So they may not be necessarily, but it does point to the different kinds of languages that are spoken, either at the home or by the student in our community.
And so when students enroll in a, in a school, the, one of the questions that is asked is what is the primary language spoken in the home? And that's where that survey, that, that information comes from. So that kind of shows you the diversity of language in our district, which has grown over the last couple of decades. So a lot of intentional work around ensuring access, not just for students, but also for families. So you've seen us expand our translation services. You've seen us expand some of our, our kind of documents that come out. We make sure everything that is online is accessible on the web so that it's easily translatable for families because we don't want to forget that our families need access to, you know, communicating with us two-way as well.
And it adds another level of complexity because if Spanish is the only language spoken in home, it adds to the parent's inability to help the student with homework and success in school. All right. Thank you so much.
Number Fox?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, how is the district evaluating whether restorative practices for behaviors are working and reducing? We want them to reduce the severity of the behavior incidents. How are we evaluating that?
I can't speak to that, Beth, do you have?
So restorative practices are used in all of our behavior structures. So when we look at, so there isn't necessarily a data point that you can look at. But when you look at our decrease in behaviors, since restorative practices have been brought into the district, that's one kind of trend line that you see. Severate behavior isn't necessarily attached to restorative practices. Restorative practices are those skills that students learn to change their behavior. As an educational system, we're always looking at the fact that students are often going, not often. Sometimes we make mistakes. Sometimes they're small mistakes, sometimes they're big mistakes. But when we make a mistake, it's also about restoring what happened from the mistake. So thinking about the educational piece of that, there's a consequence piece to behavior, but more importantly, there's also an educational piece to behavior. Once a behavior occurs, what happened? Restorative practices ask students to be reflective and build those reflectivity skills around, okay, what were you thinking? What did you, what would you do differently in the future? What needs to happen to repair any harm that took place here and how do we do that as a community and as individuals? So when you think about restorative practices, that's a lot of the foundational work around restorative practices. The proactive work around all of what you talk about with, how do we, you know, engage together in positive ways? But then if something goes wrong, how do we kind of work through that, determine how not to do it again so that we don't see that continued pattern of behavior? So restorative practices, although it's a terminology, it's really embedded into the foundation of everything we do when we look at behavior. So thank you for asking. There's not necessarily a specific metric or measure that, I don't even know if one exists specifically for that, but it really is about looking at a decrease over time in behaviors.
So what are we doing to figure out why the severity is going up of the behavior incidents and to stop that?
Yep. So that's a lot of the work around patterns of behavior and things like that. So when we're talking about the severity of behavior, we're also talking about social-emotional crisis with our young people. We have a crisis with our young people and you're seeing it in our nation. You're seeing it in all of the data across all of the schools in this nation, locally, statewide. The patterns of behavior that are larger for our students, there's, it's, it's not a PCCS issue. It's a national crisis right now. You've heard our, our community members come and speak about the crisis in mental health in our young people. So behavior is a form of communication. That form of communication, when it's large behaviors, big behaviors, behaviors that lead to consequences like this are often behaviors where students are struggling with emotion regulation, those self-management skills. So what we have to do is as a community, we have to wrap our arms around students and help them see how to, what do you do when you're angry? What do you do when you're uncertain of what to do next? How do you seek out those support systems? Who's your people that you can talk to? So when we're doing all of our work from the beginning, whether it happens in a classroom, whether it happens in the office, whether it happens at the district level, we're continuously working with our students to say, what went wrong? How do you learn from it? How do you do it differently in the future? So that it's not the pattern that the student has for the rest of their life. So it's a lot of complex work. It is deep, hard work to do. And we're seeing it earlier and earlier. You're not, you know, we're seeing behaviors now sometimes in kindergarten and first grade that we used to see in older students. There's a lot of work to do as a community members, all of us together, and it's our work together. So families are in this with us. I don't have a better answer from you for that right now because it is, it is an increasing need that we have in our community around all of this work together. We've partnered with our social service agencies, our community mental health agencies, and we continue to do this work. It's actually what led us the first year to launch the mental health fair because we saw this happening and we started to say, how do we bring all of our, our services together and say, how do we do this together and support our students? Because our students are our most important asset in our community. So what does this work look like together?
How are the emotional support dogs, how are they influencing, you know, the district and the children?
So, and I don't know if Kurt, if you want to roll on as well and talk, but I can speak to my past as well in, as an elementary principal who had therapy dogs in my buildings. And I had some severe behaviors even back then. It's been, it's been a couple of decades since I was in that role. But we had therapy dogs and what you see with the therapy dogs in our buildings is when a student is having a problem or having, having a challenge in verbalizing what they need, just having an animal there, having that support next to them, that they can just, you know, pet a dog or sit with a dog or talk to a dog, it helps kind of regulate emotion. I'm a dog person, so you know, there's, there's a lot of research around animals and how animals connect to students in a different way. Because if I'm trying to verbalize something and I can't get it out and I'm getting frustrated because I'm talking to another person and they're not hearing me and I just keep going, elevation of behaviors happens. Animals are a little, just kind of, they're not judgmental. So they're just sitting there and they're just kind of looking at you, right? So, and Kurt, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to some of the things that we see with Echo and other therapy dogs, but there's a lot of research around therapy dogs and the fundamental issues, or the support of them.
And I don't think I could add anything more than what you said. I think that connection that the kids make and they seek the dogs out. I know that the number of dogs that we have are increasing every year. So there is, you know, that, that in itself shows the value of our emotional support dogs. And, you know, I just actually answered an email this morning from a staff member inquiring about bringing an emotional support dog to their school. So there is value in it. Absolutely.
Thank you. Josh?
All right. I have two quick things. One, on slide eleven, we're talking about like the percentages. Currently, we're at twenty-one percent of economically disadvantaged students. And then my question is, I know you've kind of talked about this in the past. Do you expect this data point to go up as their access to free lunch possibly is removed going forward? Because I know that in the past you've talked about that was possibly a reason why it's gone down.
Right. I don't know. That might be a good, I don't have that information. So that might, our nutritional services team might be able to tell us more about whether they expect to see those things change with any change to the access to free lunch or free meals for all students. So that's a good thing to follow up with that team call.
I might add, if I may, that we are anticipating that the school meals program will continue at the state of Michigan. Federals, I wouldn't say it's uncertain, but it is in all three budget proposals for next year for schools at the state level.
That's great news. And then I just have one like suggestion regarding the Panorama surveys. I would say the most important thing you could do would be to create another advisory day, kind of like advisory, but instead of allowing students to move around, you kind of solely give them that time to like do the Panorama survey. So typically, we have advisories on Wednesday, but whenever we get the Panorama survey, we're still allowed to move around. And instead of limiting that so we can't move around on the Wednesday, so we lose that opportunity to do other things, maybe make another advisory day during that week, either like Tuesday or Friday or like any other day so that students have a designated time to work on the survey. And then when they're done, obviously, they'll have other work to do. Because like, as I know, I missed the last Panorama survey. I'm gonna admit it right now. I missed it. But, and I typically fill them out. So, but it was because I had to go take tests and do other things for my Panorama and then, or for my advisory and then I just fell behind and forgot. So I think that's like a big thing is just, we have the time, but the problem is that time is also being used by other things. So if you designate a time specifically to it and don't really let that time be used for other purposes, you might get, I would say, a large number of people. I can't remember the exact timeframe, but I know like especially this year, there was a lot of kids getting sick, so then they had to make up tests. And then other reasons, advisory was delayed or put off. So like then you really have a need to use advisory for other things other than the Panorama survey. So I would say that was probably one of your biggest, is having to use advisory for other things, not the Panorama survey.
Beth, would you say that the fall would be too soon? Like if we're looking at the time of year when, I know things are really crazy in the spring for you guys.
I would say it might be better due to the fact that you all have less stuff to make up and that like hasn't, you know what I'm saying? But.
If you're like reflecting on the year past, you know?
It's something to look into and maybe something worth trying.
I know you skipped.
Yeah, I was on a full different number. I do. For just for like the social-emotional learning, I know that this was brought up before and it involved, like when we talked about that with seeing the kids and with recess. I think that with some of the other studies and I see if the kids are struggling in kindergarten and first grade, I think that, you know, it was suggested before and it was okay to do recess for social-emotional learning, to apply that to that for the elementary level, especially early elementary level. And I was kind of sad to find out that that hadn't gotten to be continued or started. So, because it was, I mean, I did reiterate, you know, that one of the meetings that could that possibly be used in it was okayed. So I just wanted to say that that could be one of the issues that's causing this because when the kids are young and they come to school, they, they're not using, social-emotional learning to me is, I don't agree with all of it, but the kids do learn by experiencing them some, stuff themselves. If we're always there doing everything for them, they're never going to learn how to navigate and to deal with different things that are uncomfortable for them.
One thing I'd like to reiterate to our community members and our staff is that if there is a concern, there is a way to address a concern. I can say from my seat and I believe from Dr. Lilly's as well, that we've had zero concerns brought forward around any staff member being told or being blocked from being able to adjust their schedule as needed. I know sometimes we'll hear, we'll hear that in meetings and stuff and then as we investigate it, we can't find evidence of it. So I'm asking that people follow the process. And if there is a concern, bring the concern to your building administrator. And if there is, if the concern does not get addressed by the building administrator, we have a level above the building administrators. Each of our executive directors in teaching and learning sits above a level. There is a chart online as well as handed out in our employee handbook and everywhere. So if there is a concern, we would just ask that people share with us because we can fix concerns if we know about them. So, thank you.
Yeah, it just sounded like they weren't allowed to do it for the morning recess. I don't know. That's just kind of what, I heard that they, that that might have been a concern anyways. And then my other thing was just the concern on the perception thing, just as you had. I'm concerned as a, if a teacher's uncomfortable to not do that, is there a consequence? Like they're expected to do it if they don't do. Like, they're expected to do it, if they don't do it, is there something, do they get docked for something, or is that, does that affect their performance reviews or whatever, if they don't do the survey? They don't feel comfortable with that?
I'm not aware of any penalty for.
Penalty.
Participation or not participation in the K, the K2, I'm assuming the K2.
Yeah, for finishing those.
Right, no.
Okay, all right, just wanted to check. Thanks.
All right. Now, I know this was a, a really rich presentation with a lot of data, obviously a lot of backup information too, so if my fellow board colleagues have some follow-up information, or questions that need to be answered, please send them my way, and I will kick them over to the administration. But in the essence of time, I'm going to thank the teaching and learning team for their presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to our citizens comments overflow section, and we do have a few additional comments here that appreciate your patience waiting as we made it through our agenda here. Up next, we have Rachel Hayes.
Hello, my name is Rachel Hayes, and I'm a PFLAG board member, a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. Thank you for continuing to support our community's marginalized kids, and for helping us, over the past few months, work toward a safe, welcoming, learning environment for all. Unfortunately, some don't agree with this effort. Oh, everyone agrees that all children should be treated kindly, respected for who they are, celebrated for their unique selves, and lifted to their highest potential. Everyone insists that of course they care about all kids. Of course, every child deserves dignity and respect. Of course, no child should be bullied. But, and there it is, the truth. Too many readily agree with all of these positive declarations, and then say "but", followed by a belief or an opinion that then obliterates all of that kindness, respect, dignity, and uplifting that every child, absolutely, 100%, without a single "but", deserves and is entitled to. We have been told by a school board member that we are actually intolerant ourselves because we support LGBTQ plus policies, without considering those who disagree with the idea of being queer. We respect the right to disagree with us. However, disagreements that strip a child of their self-worth, demean them, segregate them, ostracize them, that obstruct any child's capacity to get the education that is their right in the United States, those disagreements have no place in our public schools. We respect different beliefs and opinions. However, if those belief and, beliefs and opinions trample on a child's sense of self, on who they are as a human being, if those beliefs and opinions make it harder for kids to get their education, to learn and to thrive and to succeed, if those beliefs and, and opinions act in direct opposition to what is every child's right to a safe and welcoming public school education, well then, yes, we have a real problem. The mission of public schools is to provide opportunity for all young people, opportunities to prepare for life, college, career, and citizenship. Our public schools are where people with different beliefs and backgrounds must learn to bridge differences, so that every student is given the opportunity to reach their full potential. When we work to improve things for marginalized kids, we are improving things for all kids. Empathy, compassion, and tolerance for those who are different from us are teachable character traits that will only benefit our community's kids as they grow into adults and move out into the world. I would like to invite all of you on the board to join us in our effort to create a safe, welcoming, learning environment for all. Our children, all of our children, deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Carol Weisner. She's not here. Nope, she's not? Okay, over there. Okay, we have, up next, we have William Heckman.
Hello, my name's William Heckman, I live in Canton. I have two young children, just starting our Plymouth Canton schools journey. My youngest finished kindergarten this year at Bentley, and my oldest will be starting kindergarten, or my youngest will start kindergarten this fall. My oldest just finished. I'm here to address a lot of the concerns that have been brought up about the environment at Bentley. This is all very new to me. My daughter was affected by one of the teacher departures this spring. She loved her teacher, was very upset about it, and continually asked why, and I had no answers. I didn't know if it was a medical issue, or death in the family, and it wasn't until after the end of the school year that I learned about these conditions that are being reported among the staff. I went back and reviewed the May videos of this meeting, and saw additional complaints, that this is not an isolated incident, it seems to be widespread across many teachers and even another school system. So I'm, I'm concerned about what's going on. I'm concerned about the interruption to my daughter's education. A substitute was brought in, was told to be a consistent sub, and someone that students were all familiar with already, and would handle the absence until the teacher returned. Then it became a different, permanent sub for the remainder of the year. I understand there's not going to be an impulse reaction to these allegations, and I hope there is an investigation into it, and some sort of resolution is reached. There are other parents who are now aware of this as well, and so I, I feel it's important to hear from the district, and I'm, I'm here to express my expectation that there's communication on what's found with this investigation, and what steps are taken. If, if this principle's retained, I'd like to know, you know, why, why and how the allegations were either dismissed or resolved, and then obviously, if he's let go, then we can move on from there. Whichever it is, I just want to be made aware, preferably before the fall, so that we know what to expect this year. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Mary Miller. No, Mary? Okay. That concludes our citizens comments overflow section. Thank you, everyone, for sticking around with us and sharing your thoughts. Up next, we have the discussion section of our, of our agenda. And as I mentioned in our, in the president's report, you know, today, upon our next meeting being our organizational meeting, we just want to open it up for discussion of any interest of the officer positions for the 2025 and 2026 school year. I'll, I'll allow this to be an open, open forum, that anyone can share any interest.
I'm not sure what I would do if I wasn't treasurer. If you guys will have me, I'm interested in running again. If there's somebody else that's interested, then I'm happy to.
As I recall, it was a treasurer-for-life sentence.
Exactly.
As long as you admit that policy is more cool than F and L.
We can, we can have a throwdown. We can have two committees of the whole meeting, and then we can really see how it goes.
Well, thank you for putting your hat in the ring. Anyone else want to share any interest in officer positions?
I would love to continue the vice president role. It's been fun supporting you and filling in when necessary, and I feel it's, we've made a good team. I hope that you continue, that you consider president.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I think you're a good president.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm happy to stay secretary, unless someone else wants it more.
All right, all right, I will also throw my hat in the ring. I would love to continue on as president for this coming year. I agree, I think you and I have made a really good team as president and vice president. I think we've made a lot of strides as a team of eight, and I would love to continue this position to help kind of bridge those relationships, help with our board governance. So if you'll have me, I would, I would love to continue next year. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I guess that concludes our discussion portion. Yeah, sure and sweet, thank you for that. Now we're moving on to our follow-up board questions. Do we have any from last meeting? None? Okay. And from this meeting, I captured, I think, one. This came from Treasurer Kehoe, just wanting some additional data around excused versus unexcused absences in our data presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to go through a lot of effort and work if there's not trends or if the quality of the data isn't there, but if that information is available and can help point out some of the differences, it might also help us in our conversations with the community about the importance of, of attendance, while recognizing that there are many times health conditions that require people to not be here.
Any other follow-up board questions that I may have missed?
I asked one question, but it might be like a board-to-board question versus a board-to-administration question.
Okay.
That I really appreciated the data presentation, and if someone could point me to where I would go to learn more about the trends of data, I would really appreciate that.
Sure. We can follow up on that. All right. Hearing none other, I am going to adjourn this meeting at 9:41 PM. Thank you, everyone.